Lita, I've got 6:30. You guys ready to roll there?
Yes, we're ready. I'm about to start the webinar.
Thank you.
Webinar has started.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, so welcome to the City Council Study Session for Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Christie Mauchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Moran.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lam. Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Madam City Clerk, we do have a... Councilmember Howe, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For approval of the agenda? Did my audio come through?
Did you say?
I said I'd entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
They're moved.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? By vote of six-zero, the agenda is approved. Next, we do have an executive session. This is for litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i and RCW 42.30.1f, and these are two evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer employee and for litigation. Madam City Attorney, give any idea on timing?
So, yes, we are going to be, I think, an executive session for the first matter for an approximate duration of 30 minutes. Of course, the council may extend if needed.
Okay, so if the first item's 30, I would think at least 30 on this second one as well, council, unless you all think differently. So I would say that we will probably be in executive session for an hour. Unless anyone has any thoughts?
We say 45 minutes.
Total? Sure. Okay, so we will end. I don't know if we're expecting any action.
Mayor Mauchow, I was not anticipating the council would have any action after the first executive session. I'm not aware of if action is anticipated after the second one.
Yeah, I think until we get in there, we don't know, so I suspect that action could be possible, but I don't know.
Let's just announce that action may be taken, then.
Action could be taken after executive session, so we will be back roughly 7:20? Go ahead, and we'll see you back on the other side with the other link.
Good evening. Council will be extending the executive session until 7:30. Again, council will be extending the executive session until 7:30. Thank you. Good evening. City Council will be extending the executive session until 7:40 PM. Again, council will be extending the executive session until 7:40 PM. Thank you.
Okay, I've got 7:40, so as long as City Hall can confirm that cameras back up, we're good to go.
Yes, everything is ready here.
Thank you. Okay, council, our first topic is a discussion of the selection of interview questions for finalists of the City Council vacancy. And first, we need to look at the prospective questions. So there are 12 questions. Looks like three and five are essentially duplicative. But we need to narrow this. Correct me if I'm wrong, the motion was maybe was two to three standard questions, so we can pick up to three to ask each candidate, and then each council member can ask one to two individual questions of each candidate. So this could be done by motion, or we can talk through some of the questions. I'll turn it over to council.
Excuse me, mayor, I have a matrix that I can put up on the screen so everybody can vote publicly and see them.
That would be great. Thank you.
One moment, please.
So council, while she's getting the matrix up, I think the easiest thing to do is vote for your top two or three of these questions and see where we land.
Excuse me, council, can everybody see the matrix right now? Yes? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for doing that, Lita. That's very helpful. So Deputy Mayor Clark, I'll start with you. You can just vote for your top three questions.
All right, so three, five, just whichever one, three and five, or just does that count as one vote, since they're basically the same?
Yeah, it's essentially one.
Okay, and then number seven? That will do it.
Thank you. Councilmember Howe?
I would pick number six. Number 12. And number three.
Councilmember Lam?
I had three, seven, and nine, but I believe nine and 12 are similar.
Could you repeat those?
Three, seven, and nine, so I could do nine or 12. They're both about the town center.
Which would you prefer?
12 is fine.
Okay, I am going to go with four, five, and six. Councilmember Moran?
I have four, six, and nine.
Councilmember Trine?
Two, three. Well, 12. Nine and 12 are the same.
Okay, so the way I see it, three and five are just, they're the exact same question, they're just worded slightly differently. So I'm just going to combine those, so that's clearly going to be one of our questions is, why did you not choose to run in the November election? Looking down the line here, then we have how will you balance development and infrastructure needs of our community? And it looks like question 12. Those would be the top three.
So three?
So three, six.
Six.
And 12.
And 12.
Three, six, and 12. Those are the questions we will be asking of each candidate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That made it very easy. Okay, and now, council, we will move on to the second, which is the interviews for the finalists for the vacancy of council position number six. So Madam City Clerk, I don't know if you have all of the applicants in waiting and can pull them over, maybe in alphabetical order, or however you had figured out was best, pull them over for questions?
It's what council prefers. Would you like them one at a time, or would you like them all brought up at the same time? And who would, if it's one, who would you like to be brought up?
I don't see any hands, but I'll say I'd prefer one at a time. I think that's far easier to keep candidates siloed and ask all the questions of one candidate rather than trying to bounce back between four. Okay, I got eight thumbs up.
Can we do like alphabetical by last name or first name or something?
I think that's fine.
I can do it alphabetical first name.
Cool.
Perfect.
So that would be, I believe, Jerry Norman.
Okay.
Hello, Jerry.
Mr. Norman on?
There we go. Hello.
Hello, Mr. Norman. Okay, council, for continuity, for each candidate, I'm just going to ask for a particular council member to ask the three standard questions, if that's okay, that'll be helpful. So Deputy Mayor Clark, I'll have you ask the three standard questions, if that's okay, of Mr. Norman.
Got it, and that was three, six, 12? Sorry.
Three, six, and 12.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Hello, Jerry. Good evening.
Hi there.
Hello. I think, were we doing the two-minute introduction as well, Christine, or Mayor Mauchow? Was that a?
Yes, I believe that that is what our city clerk said. So, Mr. Norman, you'll have two minutes to basically introduce yourself to your council, say whatever you want to, and then we'll start in with questions.
Well, I'll start out with hello again, because you interviewed me three weeks ago to give me an opportunity to serve the city by joining the planning commission. So hello again, and so I won't try to bore you with the same story twice, but as a refresher, I've been a resident of Sammish for about 19 years, and I've been married 51 years and still am. And I'm a US Navy veteran. I was an executive in the building and development business in Oregon for 15 years. And ultimately, that gave me the opportunity to join a life insurance company group and manage their real estate portfolio and across the country. And subsequent to that, I became CEO of a small-cap public company, and I've, you know, worked out of Washington State for years and years. So that's my background, and I have traveled Europe and worked in Europe. I was also chairman of a life insurance company in France, Oxy Life, which we sold to Zurich, so this business background recently.
Great, thank you so much, Jerry. All right, first question, so what were your reason or reasons for not running for City Council last year?
I didn't have the time last year. I got involved in a technology company that does interactive video experiences, and we had some good-sized clients using it, Starbucks and Arizona State University and whatnot, but I didn't wrap any of that stuff up until the end of the year.
Great, thank you. And how will you balance development and infrastructure needs of our community?
Well, that's the magic, that's the magic question, and I think that, you know, relative to the town center, for instance, I think it's obviously it's a great opportunity for Sammish that a lot of cities don't have. You know, we're kind of restricted on both ends relative to transportation, and we've got lots of hillsides and in residential growth. But I think that we do need a bigger and nicer town center, but the challenge is reaching the compromise. You know, every development that we did involved plating a subdivision and going to a council meeting and saying what you think, and the neighbors stand up. And I think that, you know, the bigger issues on some of your other questions were, you know, what are people concerned about? They're concerned about, they have fear about development because they don't know what it means. You know, it means different things to different people, and that's the same with traffic. You know, nobody likes more traffic, but we all like our cars. And, you know, we need to work together to find a better solution for traffic. You know, people live here because, you know, I've done some readings, you know, in the last month, to say the least. They like the location and the environment, and they like the schools, and it likes things, but we've got to get up, you know, get down to the nitty-gritty of balancing it and finding a way to move off dead center. You know, looking at the town center from outsider perspective, if you will, because I haven't been involved with the city. Their history goes back, you know, years and years, and I mean, it's not a new concept, and it's got close, and then it's kind of fallen off, and it's kind of got close and it kind of falls off. And in the meantime, relative to the environment and other issues, we've got great opportunity. You know, they didn't have LED lights like they do now 10 years ago, and we aren't requiring any solar to be added to homes. You know, we're still using hard-surface driveways rather than pavers and other ways to keep water contained. And we're not catching water off of roof systems, whether it be large buildings or, you know, housing in Hawaii, and many of the areas use catchment water for everything. We could use it for watering lawns and doing other things rather than to use potable water, which will become scarce in the future. So, you know, I just think with the development guidelines and the opportunity to shape those things and the opportunity to work together. And that's, yeah, that's one of your questions that you aren't asking, but it's about how does the city council function? And I think that it could function better. It's got to be more collaborative. You know, when you do watch the meetings, whether it's a council meeting or a planning commission meeting, you're each in your video box. And even, you know, public meeting law has people afraid to get together and actually collaborate, and yet that can all be open to the public. They can watch the collaboration live if they wanted to, but I think that, I think that we've got to get together and come up with real practical, simple solutions. And the last thing I'll say about that relative to the environment is size. You know, the size of the house I live in is stupid for two people. You know, it's a 3,800-square-foot house with two people in it. So it burns more natural gas, it takes up more space, and that was a big deal to us 20 years ago, and it isn't now. And so smaller, smaller housing units are desirable, and I think that the ADU opportunity is very, very big and real for people like me. I've got friends up in Skagit County that have built cottages or ADUs with the idea that they'll move into the, to the ADU, and they're going to lease their house to the caregivers rather than pay $12,000 or $15,000 a month to be taken care of. So, you know, I just think, I think there's a lot of good ideas out there, and we ought to be making, make something happen rather than to just find reasons why they can't happen.
Great, thank you. And lastly, you touched on this a little bit, but if you have a personal vision or timeline for a community hub or town center, and then including details on housing mix, commercial considerations, and transportation options?
Well, relative to the timelines, it's, you know, the sooner the better. It's not going to, interest rates are at an all-time low right now. You know, when I developed land, seven to eight percent was good, and then rates went up to 19%. That can happen again. Money's going to get expensive again, and that just shoves more and more people out of the housing market that can't afford it. You know, every quarter of a point, when you're in the building business, building houses, every quarter of a point that the interest rates go up blocks people out and chases away customers because they can't do it. You know, relative to transportation, I think we've got some, we've got great transportation developments, big ones, happening on both ends of our city. So I don't think we need another one. I think we need to connect to those in a way that's practical and realistic. You know, that could be anything from a micro, what's that thing called? An electric bus system or something that's efficient, running the two main thoroughfares, so we've only got two of them, that each one of them can go into Issaquah and go into Redmond. So I think that, I think there are some shorter-term, very cost-effective ways to deal with that and get it communicated to people. The infrastructure requirements are going to depend on, you know, what's, it's a chicken and the egg. What's the vision? How big are things? What's the scale? And that's going to dictate what infrastructure needs to be done. But having said that, I think that the environment should be first. I think housing should be a second priority, not ahead of the environment, and I think that the transportation has to be in conjunction with all of them. And you've already got that in your vision statement. You had, what are the words, people, planet, and prosperity. It's a blend, you know, it's a compromise. So, but you can't get back in the environment. You know, I keep my boat up in La Conner, and we go through a place called Rexville, and it says, you know, "concrete's forever" on the side of the little Rexville store because the farmers up there are worried about the day will come that somebody starts, you know, developing the farmland, and then the farmland is gone, so. That kind of summarizes, that's a five-minute dissertation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for putting me on the planning commission. I appreciate that as well.
Councilmember Clark, did you want to ask your one to two questions, and then we'll? Perfect.
Yeah, so Jerry, my personal one, so it seems like you've had like a lot of business and building, like either in regulations or real estate. So I'm wondering, like, with your background, do you see anything like with code or, or, you know, the way we kind of do business with the city, you know, with building? Is there anything that you would see that you would like to change or add, or anything specifically that you've seen in, you know, researching for a planning commission in this position?
Well, I think I mentioned a couple of points relative to new construction and/or major remodeling. You know, back when dual-pane windows came out, and the code changed, and that's what drove people to put the windows in. They didn't do it because they wanted to, and they didn't do it to save electricity. They did it because the code said they had to do it. And I think, you know, sometimes the code has to be used in that way if, if we want to guide, you know, take the housing into a direction. And so I think that, you know, relative to the size, getting back to size, if you look at Habitat for Humanity or other places, they, they, they're small places, but they're fine. You know, when I grew up in a two-bedroom house with a bunch of people in it, it was probably 600 square feet. So I think the code should reward people that build down, if you will. I think there's, there's ways we can do that. It should reward people and/or require a different way to manage the surface water rather than everything being hard surface, and then you want a storm sewer, and then how much water can that thing hold? And, you know, it just creates this giant infrastructure requirement, so I think the code itself can change that. I think the code can change, you know, the environment relative to heating and air conditioning units and electrical systems, and like you said, LED lighting. So there's lots of opportunities to tweak it without breaking it, you know, and that's, that takes everybody's ideas, so.
Well, thank you.
I'm just going to go across my screen here. So Councilmember Howe?
Hillary. Or Jerry, excuse me. Good to see you again, and I'm going to take you in a different direction. Sammish is full of lots of different kinds of people from all over the world. So, and you can suspect that diversity, equity, and inclusion are extremely important. So can you give me a time when you were a champion for equity, inclusion, or social justice?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Can you give me, can you give me an example of a time when you've had the opportunity to stand up for, to support people who are different than you?
Well, I think we've always supported people that are different than the company that I worked with. We had businesses in nine countries and had to get along with everybody. I mean, we had businesses in the UK and in France and in Germany and in Spain and Portugal. And, you know, I've traveled all those places and dealt with sales groups and people, and the office is full of staff and, you know, different kinds of unions, and, you know, it's a learning experience. So, you know, there, there, I was the outsider. You know, I was one of the Americans coming over to, you know, just because you buy a company doesn't mean you're going to be accepted into it and be able to succeed with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Howe, just one question, just wanted to confirm before I move on.
I'll, I'll, I'll try one more. What was the hardest professional decision you ever had to make? Why was it difficult? What did you do? And what did you learn?
Probably the hardest decision that I made was when I left a company, big company, with an extremely well-paying position. But that company wanted to stretch the ethics line. They wanted to, they wanted to be able to move certain assets offshore to shrink the tax consequence, legal but not great. And it had a very large trust. Money that, money that was collected for future funeral services is required to be in a trust fund or in an insurance policy. And this company wanted to move all of the hundreds of millions of dollars, a lot of money, offshore to a global wealth management company at the end of 2008, and I literally quit over it and walked away from being CEO of the company. And it was difficult, but I learned that it's, it's a lot easier to sleep if you do what's right. And, and, you know, obviously, 2009 happened, and substantial money was lost, and that's not their money. It's, it's, you're a caretaker of that money, so.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lam?
Hi, Jerry.
Hi.
My question is, do you believe the United States should be moving towards all-electric cars?
No.
And why is that?
Well, I think, one, it's a great big country, and in everything that we drive can't possibly be electric. I think we need both. I think we need fossil fuels to some degree. Large equipment requires it. There's no maybes about it. And the environmental impact of batteries has to be better understood, so I think we need to transition where it makes sense. But getting rid of fossil fuels is, is not something that I think will happen quickly. You know, serving in the military, you realize that to move an aircraft carrier takes a lot, and they're all nuclear. Some are, some aren't. You know, jet airplanes, we need them for defense. They take fuel, so, you know, there's, if we had to rapidly deploy people, hopefully not in a military position again, but it can happen, and they aren't going to run over to defend us or another country and plug in. So, you know, you need, you need some fossil fuels, as well as even electric cars need grease and oil, and that's got to be produced. They don't, you know, the bearings and all of the, the moving mechanisms have to be lubricated.
Thank you. I only had one. I only had one.
Thank you.
Is that me? Kristi?
Yes.
Sorry, you broke up there.
Okay.
Mr. Norman, I think, I think you answered my question, but so, maybe we're a little different because it seems to me you're the comprehensive plan section that you would think is the most important would be the environment section of it. But at the same time, you, you talked about a balance of that. Uh, but have you read our comprehensive plan?
I have. I've read the comprehensive plan. I've read the town center plan and I've read the building code. It's a lot to digest. And, and then like I mentioned, going back in there with the town center, I think I reached out to one of you folks, uh, Ms. Moran and I saw your name on the planning commission from 2007, I think. So I thought you could offer some color on, on it. Uh, so I have read it. Yes, sir.
How do you feel, what do you feel about, um, the lack of design standards and how might this council work to adding design standards to our regulations?
Well, I think, I think, you know, once you clarify the, you know, what the vision is for, for the city and what it's going to contain, then I think that's why you have a planning commission and that's why you've got a staff is to bring something to you for your approval. This, you know, I think that a lot of cities have no theme and no design standards and they end up not looking so good and others are outstanding at it. And, uh, if you've traveled around, you've, you know, the extreme high-end, uh, high-end being high visual positive impact, not necessarily highest price, um, you know, can look great.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moran.
Hi, Jerry.
Hi there.
Well, thank you for reaching out. And you were on my list for tomorrow. I had hoped for today, but that didn't happen. Um, I do have two big questions for you. First one is, um, knowing that, uh, the price of, of what the price of land is for Samamish and what is considered to be affordable housing. Can you, when I hear about, um, affordable housing in Samamish, I, I kind of go, really? So can you tell me what some ideas you would have to possibly, uh, make that a possibility?
Well, I think, I think there's several things that, you know, that we collectively could look at and learn about affordable housing. I did, you know, some research and, and, uh, I think that one, the median income numbers have to be current, you know, Samamish has changed a lot. So if you read through and say, gee, there was $47,000 was the number and then a hundred thousand dollars is the number and now it's a hundred and $40,000 and it's probably a hundred and $60,000. But taking that and taking the percentages that are desired to get people into, into affordable housing is going to take, it's going to take apartment style living, whether you choose that for yourself or not, doesn't matter. We need, we're going to need some apartments and, and we need smaller units that beginning families can get into. You know, I've, I've, one, I looked at some of the funding that outfits like Habitat for Humanity have. I've talked to a couple of mortgage brokers from Caliber Loans and other places and there, there is financing. When I built houses, it was all about financing. And you had 5% down or less and you could sell a house. And the people could afford to come in and buy it. And the guidelines were very similar to affordable housing guidelines, you know, 25% to 30% of your gross income and not more than about 35%. So I think we can do it. I think, uh, the city could partner with people in houses. That's been done in some cities. I think that a land trusting can be done. I think, you know, we can, we can rent land at a extremely low rate to developers. That's been done and can be done. And, uh, you know, there's, there are examples all over the country of things that didn't work and things that did work. And that's what I meant about collaborating. I think you got to get into a room and, and you've got to throw it up on the wall and discuss it and, and choose. And it's not, it's not easy, but it just can't be done in a silo. It's got to, you know, it's got to, there are different funding mechanisms for each of those different types of housing that we need to provide. And I don't think it's going to be hard.
Um, have you worked on, um, have you worked with the workforce housing ideas before?
Uh, no, I didn't. Uh, at a life company, we, we funded housing and funded developments and partnered. Um, we even funded the ski resort of Mount Hood, you know, it's just, you know, life companies have a lot of money piled up and they're looking to put it to work. And the pension funds have a lot of money put up and they don't want principal back. They just want a return on their investment. They want cash flow for future obligations. So I think we, I think we could, you know, people like this city and I think it's a great investment. So I don't know why we would have trouble finding funding mechanism for people.
Okay. Um, I have one other question and that is, what do you believe are the top three issues for the residents for Samamish? Not the council, but for the residents.
Yeah, for the, well, the residents, I think there's, there's, there's top three negative issues and top three positive issues for the residents. So I think fear of development is a top, is a big issue with people. When you talk to them, they don't like it. I think affording to stay here long-term is an issue. And it's, it's not just affordability. The street that I live on, we've got multiple people that are 70 and we've got equity, we own our homes. But, but they say, gee, I don't want to have to move to Arizona. I'd like to stay here. And they don't want to move to Bellevue or Seattle. So a choice. And traffic congestion is a fear. Cause it can be managed. There's ways to do it. The positives, they love that, you know, people always tell me that they love living here. They like the trails and they like the parks. They, the ones with kids like the, like the schools. They don't just, they moved here because of the schools. And they feel safe and, uh, and they've got a great proximity to business, but they don't want Costco at the top of Inglewood Hill. So, you know.
Thank you so much for applying and, and I will be giving you a call back.
All right. Thank you very much.
So I'm going to pull up the caboose here, Mr. Norman. Um, so first I do want to say thank you to you for your service to the US Navy and to this country, sir. I very much appreciate that. Um, in your application, uh, you speak to shaping the future of Samamish. What is the one item you would tackle to help achieve your vision of how it should be shaped?
Well, I don't know that there's one item. Like you said, I think you, I think there's, there's, there's a triangle. You've got to deal with the housing. You know, that's got to, that's got to happen. But, but we can't do it at the expense of the lake. This lake's got real problems and I don't, you know, and it's, one of its problems has got four cities around it. So there's not even one city dealing with it. And I am a boater and I am a fisherman. And, uh, and so I see what the runoff is being caused and the nitrogen that's going in it and the fish population. And we can't, we aren't going to be able to go buy that back. So that's got to be top of mind, let's say, when we go look for these other solutions. And you can't solve a traffic problem until you know what's going to be developed so that you can quantify what's the need going to be and how is that all going to work? So it's a, you know, it's a building block. It's, you know, you can't do one without the other. That's, that's not a, that's not answering the way you posed the question, but that's, that's all I got.
Okay. So one additional question here. In the 2019 city council election, you supported council member Trin. Um, I would like to know what issue, um, of council member Trin's platform did you support? What, what caused you to want to support him?
I had the feeling that he was interested in keeping the residential environment that we've got. And that gets back to the fear factor. I think that people are afraid that, that somebody's going to go on the council and build high-rise buildings in Samamish. I think it's fear. And so, you know, being involved with a love of residential neighborhood and the love of the beauty and community that we got is an important factor.
Thank you. That's all the questions that the council has. We appreciate your time here this evening.
Thank you. And thanks, thank you for the interview. It's fun to be able to talk to you instead of just watch TV, you know?
Uh, Jerry, I will now transfer you back to an attendee and I will promote Kathy Richardson. One moment, please.
So councilmember Howe, I'm going to have you ask the three standard questions.
You're muted, Kathy Richardson. Thank you.
Thank you. It does that automatically. Hello.
So hi Kathy, this is Karen Howe. And I'm going to give you your two minutes to, um, give your opening statement and then I'm going to ask three questions.
Great. So, uh, first of all, I just want to say thank you, uh, for serving our community and for considering all of our applicants. I've got a lot of glare and I can't say very well. That's better. Um, so I, I, I'm going to repeat a little bit of the information that was, uh, provided to you already and hopefully provide a little bit more context. Um, I've been a resident here in Samamish since 2005 and about 10 years ago, I served on the planning commission. Um, I really actually enjoyed working on the planning commission. It was a great opportunity. I loved working with the community. I actually like reading code. I can't explain why. So, um, and, and I like working with, uh, you know, all of the constituents of our, our city code in the example of planning commission to come up with, uh, solutions to, um, make our city better. So I found that extremely rewarding work. So rewarding that I, I did run for city council in a, in, in that moment in my life. It was a great learning opportunity and, um, as you probably know, I did not win that election and, um, that was actually just fine because my consolation prize was I, I was able to continue as the chair of the planning commission uh, in my final year. And so that was great. I actually, um, I now run a small business. I, uh, have a small consulting company that I run out of my home. And, uh, thought I would be a company of one. I'm slightly larger than that now. But, um, I, I did travel quite extensively for work and, uh, that happened shortly after the end of my term uh, on the planning commission and travel is not particularly conducive to participating in person in public events and activities and things like that. So I've been out of that, that, that kind of local government involvement as a result. And, um, like many people with COVID, I, my travel stopped and I now work from home and I don't know that I will go back to that level of travel. I very much enjoy our community and working from home. Uh, the thing I miss actually is interacting with people in person. Uh, and I, you know, Zoom is a, is a close compromise, but it, it doesn't really make up for those in-person conversations. And so I hope that we all get back to that someday. So, um, I'm really interested in, in getting back into a role of serving the community. Uh, I think this is a great opportunity. For me to potentially be able to do that. And, um, I want to make something very clear. I, I didn't apply for this position to advocate for a particular issue or attempt to address a specific concern. It really is, um, you know, I, I hope to be able to make a difference and, um, it's work that I, I know that I enjoy. I also know that it, it's demanding and requires quite a time investment. And, um, that definitely, uh, was something that I considered before applying. So with that, I'll just close with, um, a wise and dear friend once told me, uh, that it's the work that you do and the people that you work with that matter. And, um, I hope to be able to work with you and do work that matters.
Well, thank you Kathy. And I'm going to ask you, what were your reasons for not running for city council on the ballot last year?
Yeah. Um, having gone through an election process once, I, uh, have some familiarity, uh, with the effort and time required to do that well. And we had a family situation last year that I felt I needed to devote my time to. So I, I did not feel like it would be, I didn't want to regret not being able to spend time with the people that I love while they're here.
The next question I have is how will you balance development and infrastructure needs of our community?
Aha. So, um, I think you need, uh, I think development needs to help fund infrastructure. Uh, I don't think that it is wise to, uh, to have development without, or to allow for development without planning for the related infrastructure that's necessary to support that. I don't think that's fair to the existing community and I don't think it's fair to, you know, the new residents that will be part of the community to not have the infrastructure uh, in place to be able to support them. And I, I know that, uh, Samamish has had an infrastructure debt uh, since its inception that, that we are slowly paying off. And, uh, I think that's an important balance that we need to continue to strike as a community.
What is your personal vision and timeline for a community hub or a town center? Include as much detail as you can, including housing mix, commercial considerations and transportation options.
So this one was an interesting question for me to attempt to prepare to answer because I don't have, uh, a personal vision for the town center. Uh, I think our residents, uh, appreciate and enjoy some of the amenities that are available in, in the town center that we have and the satellite retail areas that we have. I, when I first joined the planning commission, they were handing off, uh, the town center to the council. And so I dutifully read that entire section of the code and, um, it really made an impression on me, honestly. The, uh, environmental considerations that were taken into account in the development requirements were quite stringent and, um, at the time, I think, uh, to some degree, cost prohibitive. Uh, I think that the council, uh, over time anticipated, um, that we would grow into being able to cover those costs, that development would grow into being able to cover some of those costs for stormwater retention and, and things like that. Uh, and I think we've seen that over time. I actually, I thought it was very thoughtful and well, uh, well-written that, you know, as a newbie planning commissioner, I was very impressed. I did have the sense that it need, it, you know, it was a vision that over time would evolve. And I think that is probably the most important thing that we need to consider is, is to be able to adapt and evolve as, as things change. Uh, I think we've all seen, uh, quite a requirement to do that over the last couple of years. And, um, so I, I also recognize that, uh, we need to be able to accommodate growth in a way that limits the impact to the environment and to the character of our community. And, um, I, I hope that that remains part of the vision that we have for the town center as part of our overall plan. Yeah.
Terrific. Now I do have a couple of quick questions that are my questions.
Okay.
And so it, you know, the, the city is filled with people, not just buildings. So I'm going to ask you a question around inclusion and equity. I'd like to know if you've had any experience where you've had a time when you were able to be a champion or someone that could speak out behalf of equity, inclusion, and social justice?
So I, I appreciate that Jerry went first.
I didn't say this was an easy question.
No. And it was interesting for me to, you know, to think about how I might want to answer that question. Because I think there are perhaps lots, I'm going to say this. I think the way that you advocate for those things is you model the behavior that you hope and expect. The people around you will also model. And when faced with a situation that is not aligned with that, to respectfully speak out. So yeah, I don't know if that's specific enough for you, but hopefully that helps.
Yes, it does. It helps me understand the way you think. And so the, the next question I'll ask, and it'll be my final question, is can you tell me about a time when you were wrong? How did you know that you were wrong? What did you do about it? And what did you learn?
So a certain significant other in my life takes great pleasure in the moments that I am wrong. And so what I have come to accept, as much of the perfectionist as I aim to be, we're all human and we all make mistakes. And I think almost all of the time, we all have good intent. And so when I'm wrong, I say I'm wrong. And, you know, hopefully laugh about it. And, you know, if they're, you know, correct, you know, if there was harm out of my error, to rectify that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
Kathy.
Hi.
My question is, in what ways have you or your household worked to reduce your carbon footprint? And similarly, what does a sustainable future for our community look like?
Ooh, the first half is easier than the second half of your question. I actually, one of my favorite examples is I've had the opportunity, the amazing opportunity to build a home in this city. Great learning experience, very scary. Gave me an opportunity to experience the development process as someone that's not in the construction industry. You know, working with our city to build a home. And the particular site that I'm located on isn't very conducive to solar. So we elected to put in a geothermal heating and cooling system that I think is just super cool. And so that's my favorite example because I was very pleased that we had an opportunity to do that. And I'm happy to say that it's extremely efficient from an energy perspective. And so that's an example. Can you repeat the second half of your question for me?
And what does a sustainable future for our community look like to you?
So when I think of future and sustainability, I suspect that may require quite a bit of change in behavior, which is hard to accomplish, especially in short periods of time. So, you know, I, I was talking to a friend about this recently and it's very difficult to do no harm. I think a sustainable future looks to me like an educated community making choices, both through incentives and through requirements that lead to sustainable outcomes. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Train.
Hi Kathy.
Hi.
So what's your thinking then if you were on the Planning Commission at the time of the development of the Town Center Plan? The regional stormwater facility? And is that something that's still viable? Have you, who should pay for it? Should it happen?
Oh, boy, I, I, I don't have an educated opinion on that at this particular moment. I think stormwater is something that we are going to need to address and will continue to address as a, as a community. Whether or not that is the answer or here's the thing, I've learned that is, it is very rare that there's only one answer to a problem like that. And so I do think it's going to take several different strategies. And whether or not that is the best, I put that in quotes, strategy is not clear to me at this particular moment. So I apologize that I don't have a yes or no answer. But I think it's a complicated question.
I think your geothermal idea throughout the whole city would be one way for sustainability.
It's very cool. It is, I don't, I'm not certain that it's super affordable. The, we can talk about it. I do think it's very cool, but there was a very, you know, large tax incentive. At the time, I don't know if that's there and I already needed to do quite a bit of foundation work. So this was able to be included in that in a very functional way. And I think that's part of what makes things like that an easier choice. Yeah, sure.
Councilmember Moran.
Hi Kathy.
Hi.
Okay, I have one question. And I want you to tell me what you believe are the top three issues that are affecting our residents in Samamish.
So I think Jerry took a lot of thunder on that one. I thought he answered that actually very effectively. I, so and it's interesting the way that he characterized it, you know, his fears versus, you know, characteristics that people want to retain. I, you know, development, I think will continue to be a topic and an issue for the community. I think the environment and the various ways that that shows up for our community, you know, through tree canopy, parks, land. I think that's another very strong theme for us as a community. And I have to say, I think community is a really strong theme for us as a community. You know, we, I grew up in Seattle and I've never had neighbors like I have here. I've never felt like I have a neighborhood. And I think, I think that's rare and becoming more rare. But I actually think it's quite common here. And I think that character of community is something that's really important. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, sir.
Hello Kathy.
Hi.
I know you at least briefly talked about this in your opening statement, but what kind of civic engagement or involvement have you had since 2012?
Honestly, very little. I, you know, I'll watch some of the council meetings or follow up on an agenda or two or read some of the publications about our community. And, you know, certainly talk to neighbors. But I really have had stepped away during that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just making sure she only had one question. So Kathy, you've been notably absent from your public service since 2012. Why the renewed interest in being on city council now?
Because I watched you guys. I'm going to be really honest. Last year, when there was an opportunity to apply, I watched the meetings and I couldn't stop. I stayed up ridiculously late to watch real time. And my mother is actually a former council member for the city of Anacortes. And I call her up and I talk to her about, you know, just, you know, we can kind of nerd out on council stuff. And I thought, oh dear. I, this is something that I, that I, that I like. And, you know, so I've learned to pay attention to those things, you know, to pay attention to the spark. So that's why the spark is still there.
So you mentioned in your application not having an agenda. But everyone has a vision and a desire to accomplish things if they're on the city council. So what is somewhere between one and three items that you would hope to tackle and pass as a council member?
Oh, pass. I wasn't ready for the pass question because what I, I've been thinking about this and what, what I, there's so much to do. Like there's no end of things that we can or should or would like to accomplish. So what I'd like to tackle is tackle and stuff, if that's a thing. You know, I think having, you know, your get-together where you plan and, you know, we, you, we have work to do and to, you know, decide what that good work is and make it happen is what is most interesting to me. You know, I didn't come with, you know, the list of the three things that I, I hope are on that list. There are also, there are things that I know will be on the list and the comprehensive plan is something of personal interest to me. So maybe that's a way to answer your question again. It's something that I think, you know, is a great way to set the vision for, for our future. And I'd love to be part of that. You guys got me all excited. I think I had too much coffee. Sorry.
Well, thank you. I think that wraps up all of our questions here. Very much appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. You guys have a great slate of applicants, so you can't lose. Thank you very much. I don't know how to leave. I haven't been trained.
I think the city clerk will put you back as a.
I will do that right now. And I'll promote, I'll promote Pam Stewart. Thank you.
So while she's doing that, Councilmember Lamb, I'm going to have you ask the three standard questions.
Okay.
Pam Stewart.
Hello.
Hi Pam. How are you?
I'm good, thanks. How are you?
Good. So I'm going to start with your two minutes. You have a two-minute introduction and then I'll ask three questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Mayor Mao Chow, Councilmember Moran, Councilmember Train, and Councilmember Lamb, it's really good to be back here with you again. And Deputy Mayor Clark and Councilmember Howe, it is so truly wonderful to see you up here. It feels a little weird to be here and to be introducing myself this evening. But I do want to thank you very much for asking me back for an interview and I am excited to be here. So I'm going to do an intro more for the public, I think, because I feel like, you know, there's probably not much I can tell you that you don't already know in a two-minute intro. For those who don't know, I'm Pamela Stewart. I was elected to this council in 2017 and I completed my term on December 31st of last year. Something maybe you all don't know about me is that we just celebrated our 19th year as Samamish residents. So that's pretty exciting. I live here with my husband, Tom, my daughter Emily, our three dogs, and our oldest is off at the U-Dub. I'm still very active in the community. Most recently, I've now joined the Drama Boosters at Eastlake High School. So yet another organization to work with and very exciting. I currently work at Microsoft. I've served the community and the region in a variety of ways, going back to serving on the PTA at my son's preschool just a few years ago, to Chief Umpire for Eastlake Little League, to, you know, while I was on the council, being able to help protect our watersheds, serving on the Riot 8 Council and working with the cities all across King County, while I served on the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, helping to reduce greenhouse gases and protect the environment. I'll just say I was proud and honored to serve this community for four years. It really was one of the most rewarding experiences in my life. And I'm here offering my services once again to fill this sudden and unexpected vacancy. So tonight, you know, I'll make the ask as they train us when you're running for office, so to speak, right? I'll make the ask that I hope that you will select me so that I can once again serve this amazing community. Thanks.
Okay, standardized question one. What were your reasons for not running for city council on the ballot last year?
Sure. I mean, I'll be really honest and there's, you know, no offense to anyone on this, but, you know, given the climate on the council last May, no, no pun intended. I felt that I could do more to make meaningful progress on the issues that I believe in and I believe that matter the most outside of the council. I put out a public statement to that effect, right, that, you know, when I ran for office, I wanted to make sure that I could, you know, help the city become sustainable, both environmentally and economically. And that after serving on the council, I just became more passionate about reducing greenhouse gas emissions, improving transit options, you know, making sure that our city supports all forms of diversity and equity and inclusion and helping those in need. And I just felt that at the time, my energies would yield more results by And I just felt that at the time, my energies, uh, would yield more results by working, by, by focusing them in other places and, and being outside of the council. That's changed. I think that, uh, that tide has shifted. I believe that my efforts would actually yield more results working with this group. Because I do know that each of you care deeply about the environment and making sure that every resident feels like they belong. And, and I think that, you know, it would really be better. And then quite simply, I was asked, a lot of people reached out to me and they asked if I would come back and serve. And really, it's really hard to say no when people come and ask you to serve. So that's really it.
And the next question, how will you balance development and infrastructure for needs of our community?
Sure. Uh, this is a great question, um, and certainly a timely one and a big important one. And one that, uh, this council and probably future councils will continue to tackle. I think there are a lot of ways to plan an efficient community. Mary Victor's provided a number of examples. But we have to start with developing some additional master plans. So we still don't have a transportation master plan. And we really need to develop a, a sustainable, effective and efficient, uh, transportation system. And it is a system. It isn't just about roads. It isn't just about bikes. It isn't just about buses. It's about all of that. It's about connectivity. I know Councilmember Train, uh, talks about all the time, right? We need wildlife corridors and we need people corridors, right? So people can walk and be connected. All of that being said, I think we have a couple of major infrastructure areas. We have transportation, uh, and, and everything that goes with that, with the roads and things. We have water and sewer. Uh, we have stormwater management. Um, and, and schools, even though the schools are not under our purview. I think those are the, the major infrastructure areas that people are most concerned of. I think from a water and sewer perspective, we need to work with, uh, and apply pressure to the King County Council to ensure that they, that they do in fact fund the northern diversion. I think we have a huge opportunity in front of us. There are unprecedented federal funds available right now to make sure that that gets, that that gets funded. And I think that can help to resolve our wa- our, uh, water and sewer issue. From a stormwater perspective, uh, staff has been working for a while now on how we do a better job of, uh, doing retrofits for stormwater, right? It was, it was very clearly explained to us that, um, you know, it's not as, we have really great stormwater code in place today. And it's probably not as much about, uh, the next house that's built that we have to worry about. It's about retrofitting stormwater solutions for many of the older neighborhoods where, when they were implemented, there weren't strong codes. And I think that we can make a lot of progress there on the stormwater. And then with the schools, uh, I really think that our best bet is to, uh, is to lobby the state. I think that the funding, how our schools are funded is, is upside down and backwards. Schools need to be fully funded by the state, ha- continuing to have bonds and levies is not the, the right way forward. And we really need to get schools funded because schools will be overcrowded. Whether we build another house in Semamish or not, right? Because the school districts go well beyond our boundaries. So we really need to advocate to fix that. And I think we have to do that in parallel to develop, to creating a sustainable, uh, plan for how we develop. And I will say that I, I do think that the way forward, uh, for the future is looking at how we develop, uh, mixed use developments. I think that when you can put, uh, housing with and even on top of places where people have to work or shop, you make it more sustainable, you can use your infrastructure far more efficiently and effectively. And you can make things like transit work way better. So I think it's a combination of all those things. It's not one thing. It's probably a million little things and we need to tackle all of those. And it will take time. Um, there will be no instant, there are no silver bullets. It will not be instantaneous.
And the last question is, what is your personal vision and timeline for a community hub or town center? Include as much detail as you can, including housing mix, commercial considerations and transportation options.
It's an interesting question. Personally, like, I don't know that my personal vision is what we should talk about. So I'm going to kind of answer this with two parts. First, I think we should be making data-driven decisions, right? And we need to be getting the data, um, on how we can build that sustainable future. What our community needs, what our community wants. And what we can do to improve the economic future of our city as well. We haven't, I haven't heard any questions yet about budget and I think that's really important. And I think, uh, when I think about a community hub or a town center, I think about making sure we have, uh, an economic development plan that doesn't make our city dependent on development. Um, and that doesn't rely so heavily on residential property taxes. So I think that gathering the data, um, so that we can, um, make those decisions is really important. That being said, that's not what you asked me. You actually asked me what my personal vision was. So I, I do have one. And we actually ironically, I don't know if, uh, Councilmember Moran and, and Mayor Malchow remember this, but in our very first, um, uh, retreat, we were asked sort of for this vision. And, and as I was thinking about this, I reflected back on that. I envision a gathering place, uh, first and foremost, it's really about community and creating a place where the community can gather. And we see that happening even now at, well, now, just pre-COVID, right? At City Hall, we saw people, we see people come together for, uh, the Fourth on the Plateau. Uh, we see people come together for the farmers markets. But we also see that it's not big enough and we need more of that. I see a place that has, uh, trees and trails and, and community spaces along with restaurants and services and businesses to serve our community. I also see things like maybe a performing arts center, right? A place where we can have this Semamish symphony and we can have our community theaters perform. And I imagine, um, I imagine being able to take your child to dance lessons. And while they're in their dance lessons, you can do your shopping and you don't have to drive to a bunch of different places and you don't have to leave the plateau. I imagine sunny summer days where you can bike around town and you can stop in for a bike to eat. And you can do that with your young kids because they can't bike up and down the plateau. I mean, honestly, I can barely bike up and down the plateau. So you can do that because you can stay right up here on the plateau. I know that, uh, businesses need an element of residential to thrive. So while I know that, um, and especially during the pandemic, I would have loved to have had more restaurant options. That were right here in our community, right? Our community has been relatively safe when it comes to COVID compared to some of our, uh, some other places. And so we might have felt more comfortable being able to do more restaurants or eating outside if we had more options. But we know that brick and mortar businesses need an element of residential to really be able to, to thrive and, and sustain their business. So I do think that we need that mixed use. I also think that that is the way of the future. There are eight billion people on the planet and growing. And we really do have to be thinking forward and saying, we aren't gonna, and I think even the other, uh, folks have mentioned that we probably aren't going to be able to live in our 3,500 or 4,000 square foot homes anymore. We're going to have to be thinking differently about how we do housing. And so I think we can have that mixed use. We can have housing mixed in there. I also imagine solar panels and green roofs, uh, a fully electric infrastructure, no fossil fuels. The, the town center should not have gas heat. It should not have gas stoves. And I love my gas stove, but they gotta go. Uh, we need to convert those. We need charging stations, not just for cars, but for the electric buses, uh, that will inevitably, inevitably be coming. We need places for our teens and our tweens to hang out and have fun. So they can have some autonomy and the safety of our community, right? We are one of the safest communities. I want my, I want my tween hanging out here, not somewhere else. And they can have a place to go even before they have a driver's license. I imagine shuttles, uh, from the center to the light rail. I imagine intra-city shuttles connecting all of our business centers, our schools and our neighborhoods. I imagine some of that housing to be housing options where we can downsize. Uh, we can have senior living. We can have, uh, a place so residents, once they raise their families, they can stay here in a community that they love, that they've maybe lived for 20 or 30 years. And again, you said, how much housing? Um, well, what does the data tell us? That's how much we need. We need enough for our seniors, our empty nesters, our families who might unfortunately be transitioning to two homes. Um, and housing for those who work and serve our community. So that's how much housing. I don't know exactly what that number is. We need to gather the data. And, and do, take some of the emotion out of this really important decision. Cause I know we all have emotions, but I, I really believe it has to be data-driven. And we need to plan for future generations. We owe it to our children and our grandchildren to plan this wisely. And really, I just want a place, uh, where we can gather and when we're running errands, we can run into friends. Where we can enjoy those holidays. And, and where hopefully we don't even have to drive there, but if we do, hopefully there'll be enough parking. So that's, that's what my vision is.
I'm going to ask, um, my individual question, which is, has there been a time you have advocated for diversity, equity and inclusion in your workplace or community?
Yeah, um, definitely. From, you know, everything from marching and protesting, um, to, uh, advocating for and, and campaigning for diverse candidates. But I do have one, um, fairly recent situation when I was actually knocking on doors and campaigning. I knocked on a door and, uh, the person said, yeah, I will vote for you. And I apologize, this is a quote, or at least a paraphrase, I'll vote for you because you're not one of those Indian women. And I took a step back and unfortunately my 11-year-old daughter was next to me. And I, and I had a difficult conversation, um, but I think a productive one. Where I, I asked the question, well, why? Why does it matter? You know, what color my skin is or what my country of origin is. Aren't we all immigrants here? If we're not, if we're not part of the first people, we're all immigrants. So what is it about being an Indian woman that, that scares you? And we talked more and, and I feel like, you know, I don't know that I changed any hearts or minds, but I feel like I at least was able to engage in a conversation where the person at least recognized that, that maybe that wasn't the best criteria or the best way to make a decision. And maybe they didn't really have a good reason why they felt that way. And so I hope that that kind of conversation and those kinds of conversations will help to change the world.
Thank you Pam.
Thanks Amy.
Councilmember Train.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions. Hey Pam.
Hi Karen. Karen, I'm sorry. I have a point of personal privilege. How are you feeling?
I'm doing, I'm doing well. Thank you for asking. That was very nice. I have a couple of questions. One is if you could change, um, any decision that you had in your last term, what would it be?
Well, I guess, um, you know, when we were talking about the EIS, uh, that was one of the, the latest decisions, one of the later votes that I took. I think we, we made some good progress. I was really excited to, uh, get some amendments in there about, um, you know, creating a, an element in the traffic model to account for transit. Should we ever get, you know, increased transit to be able to account for that? And then I, I went ahead and I voted for option four. And in, in retrospect, I, I still don't think even with that transportation element in there, I still don't think I support that. And so that would be a vote that I would change.
Okay. Okay. And then, um.
And wait, was it option four or was it category four? Remember how confusing that was?
Oh yeah, I know. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. I remember that meeting. And so then the other question I had was, you had mentioned, um, you had mentioned about, uh, funding and needing to fix and retrofitting the, um, older neighborhoods with stormwater systems. What, what ideas would you have and how would we fund, how do we go about funding those?
In terms of the retrofits, again, I don't have specific solutions. And again, they would most likely be very neighborhood specific. Because it would depend on the geography. It would depend on, you know, the, the housing and how it's laid out. And obviously I think that's where we, we turn to our exceptional staff and we look to them to come to us with the variety of solutions. In terms of funding, again, uh, we are in very unprecedented times. And I'm going to dare say a once in a lifetime opportunity in that there are, there are, there's a lot of money at the federal and state level to, uh, to implement for infrastructure. And so that would be the first place I would go is where can we get some of that money? One of the other things I really think we should consider doing, and I think I probably only mentioned it once in the four years that I was on council. But, um, especially with all of the funding that's available, I think we should consider hiring someone whose full-time job it is, is to go find us money through grants. Now, our, our staff does a, a pretty good job of getting us grants in particular areas. But I think it would be pretty easy to pay for that person, that they would pay for themselves and then a lot more. If that's all they did was, you know, grant writing types of things. And I think that that would be a great place to start. There are organizations, uh, and environmental organizations that we could partner with to do that. And then part of that, I think we are going to have to pay for. Because it is, again, um, it, it, there is a public good there and that protecting the environment, protecting our lakes and streams. You know, there are, there are things that we can't, we can't fix later. So we have to fix it now. And so I do think we'll have to pay for part of that out of, out of tax money and, and, and we'll just have to make that decision when we get there.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Clark.
All right. Hello Pam. Um, so kind of like Councilmember Moran, but I'm thinking, you know, if you were to come back to council, is there anything that you would do differently than, you know, previous four years?
Oh gosh. Um, great question. Um, all right. You guys are all going to love this. Talk less. I get more succinct. So that would be a big one. I think another thing I would do differently is, um, and we tried this a little, but not nearly enough, like, let's have a buddy system. Like let's partner up and, uh, I think, uh, Mayor Malchow's been asking people, you know, what are the one or three, one to three things you really want to do? Like what's something that someone's really passionate about that they want to do? Let's buddy up. Let's come up with some real ideas. Let's figure out how we're going to fund them. Let's find out what, you know, partner organizations or, or jurisdictions we need to work with and put together a proposal. And, and that way you already have two people who are fully invested. It's something we're passionate about. And I think that makes it easier to try to, you know, work together as a council to make those things go forward. And I think that that's a way, you know, and we could even do it in threes, uh, no more than that. But I think that would be a way for us to, to be able to work together and really get some things done. And allow everybody that opportunity and a chance to feel like they're getting something important done and something that they're passionate about then, and maybe create a more collegial, uh, atmosphere.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Howe.
So Pam, can you tell me about a time when you were wrong? And, uh, not just kind of wrong, like really wrong. So how did you figure out that you were wrong? What did you do about it? What was the outcome? And what did you learn?
Sure. Well, I mean, a time, like how many times today? No, um, all kidding aside, it's, it's a, it's a great question and it's very introspective. I would expect nothing less from you, Councilmember Howe. I'm struck by a time when I lost my temper with one of my kids. And that's just wrong, right? I yelled at them. I made them feel bad. And so after we all calmed down, I went back and I apologized. And I said, look, there's no excuse for that behavior. It doesn't matter what you did. There's no, there's no excuse for me responding to you and behaving that way. And I know as your parent, uh, especially when you're younger, I have a power over you to make you feel really bad. And I should never abuse that power. And you should never accept that from someone else. You should never accept being treated that way or let someone make you feel that way. And knowing that I made you feel so bad, um, you know, I'm sorry. And the next time, which there might be a next time I lose my temper with you, remind me that I told you that it's not okay for me to respond to you and treat you that way. And it's never going to be okay. And it's never going to be okay.
Can you tell me about a time, you can get the theme here, can you tell me about a time when you had to bring groups together who did not agree, who did not get along? How did you do it? What was the outcome? And what did you learn?
Yeah. I mean, I can think of sort of clinical ones at work, right? I work at Microsoft and there are some pretty passionate, opinionated people at Microsoft to bring people together. And I think that, you know, anytime you're going to get a group of people together that don't agree, the first thing you need to do is sit down and say, you know, why are we here? Is there a common problem we're trying to solve? Do we have a common goal we're trying to achieve? What is that? Let's focus on those things first. And so, you know, as a program manager at Microsoft, I kind of do that all the time where you bring people together, you get them in a room, we agree on the goals, we agree on the mission. We agree on what success looks like and we literally define, you know, part of my job right now is actually defining these processes and getting an entire organization to follow them. Define your success criterias. Have those difficult conversations around those positive things, the outcomes, the success, what it is we want to achieve. And then tackle the, okay, how are we going to do this? And then break it down into smaller parts and wherever possible, break people up to give them different parts of the solution. Because sometimes, sometimes the best way to get people to work together is to not make them work so closely together if you don't have to. And allow them to, you know, solve their portion of the problem and then bring it all back together for the totality of the solution. So that's how we tackle it at work.
Thank you.
All right. So Pam, good to see you. You mentioned in your application, you want to partner with all six members of the council and specifically point to, quote, "open and transparent government" and ensuring that all voices and perspectives are considered when any decision or policies are enacted, end quote. So my question for you, and it's a little bit of a tough one, I admit.
All right, bring it on.
When you were on, I am, here it comes. When you were on GMPC, you were aware of the issues surrounding our growth target. But as a member of the council, I am not aware that you alerted any of your fellow council members and I know that city staff was caught flat-footed on the issue as well. So my question is, why did you choose not to reach out to your fellow council members in that vein of open and transparent governing?
I'm really glad you're asking me this question. I wish y'all had asked me before. So I actually didn't know that that issue was being reconsidered before I got the alert from the staff. So I didn't know that the Mobility and Environment Committee within King County was actually considering that amendment until I got the email, just like the rest of you. So I did not have advance notice that it was coming. I don't know that that answers your, it was a multi-part question, so I don't think I answered your whole question. But that, I guess, it kind of, it kind of took the air out of it.
You did.
I actually didn't have a heads up.
Through a different channel.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I said, my understanding was it came through a different channel, so.
I honestly didn't know that that was being remanded and that was just as much of a surprise.
Oh, not that it was being remanded, that the motion was coming before GMPC to vote on. So it would have been in your packet.
It didn't hit our packet until after that email came through. So that amendment was not in the original packet that, or I don't know if it was in the original packet, but the packet hadn't arrived before we got the email.
So my second question is, in reading your application, the environment seems to be your primary concern. What environmental policies will be your priority if appointed?
Yay, thank you for asking me this because I get really excited about this and I geek out. And I've talked about it before and I'll keep talking about it forever. We, climate change is an existential threat, not just to us and maybe not as much to us, but it certainly is to future generations. So I truly believe that we need to, you know, attempt to fulfill our commitments like we have on the K-4C and we need to start measuring our greenhouse gas emissions and our other areas where we negatively impact the environment and then understand how we can start to address those. From a per capita greenhouse gas emission perspective, I suspect, but I don't know because we don't have the data, but I suspect that we have some pretty big areas that we need to tackle. We do know that the wealthier people, and I know Councilmember Moran, you had raised this before and I actually did some research on it, so I'm glad you raised it, that fifty, over 50% of the world's greenhouse gas emissions are produced by the 10% wealthiest people. Well, why is that? Because we tend to live in bigger houses, we tend to own more cars, we buy more stuff, we consume more things. So we tend to be bigger contributors to the negative, you know, to climate change. And so how can we tackle that? We know at a macro level that King County, in King County, that about a third of greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation, a third from the built environment and a third from industry. We don't have industry in Simamish. So how, what does our breakdown look like? It does not, it does not look like King County's, that's for sure. So what does that look like and where could we, you know, invest our money most effectively and efficiently by understanding what those biggest emitters are and how we could most positively, you know, turn that tide? So that would be one of my big focuses. And there are a number of organizations that we can partner with, League of Win-Win Voters and King County are both doing a lot of work on helping cities start doing those measurements. We could certainly reach out to cities like Mercer Island, who just not that long ago actually did the work to figure out how to start measuring that. And then we can make really good, data-driven, value-added decisions on how to start knocking those things out of the ballpark. So that would be, that would be one of my, that would be my top, my top priority. If, you know, if council agreed that that was a really important thing to tackle. But I'd love to see that become one of our priorities.
Great.
Did that answer your whole question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I was the last one to ask questions, so Pam, appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thanks.
I will now put you back as an attendee and I'll promote Rosine.
Thanks, Lita.
Thank you.
Councilmember Train, I'm going to have you ask the three questions, the three standard questions.
Hi, Ms. O'Farrell. Can you guys hear me? Okay, we can't hear her.
I can hear you.
No, I can't hear her either. Rosine, can you say something just so we know that?
No.
Rosine, we don't have audio for you. I don't know if maybe Lita can help you troubleshoot that?
I don't see a microphone by her name.
She might have to go out and come back.
You might have to come, yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to try and exit out of the meeting, Rosine, and then try and come back in and see if that will give you audio?
I will put her as an attendee and maybe she could try to come in again.
Okay.
Hello? Can you hear us? No.
Yeah, we don't have audio again. Lita, is there a phone number where she can maybe, we can see her on the screen, but maybe she could call?
I will try one more thing.
And we have audio that way?
When she's an attendee, I can ask her to speak and maybe we can try that way.
Okay. Okay.
Let's see if this worked. Are you able to speak? No.
Rosine, can you just try an audible so we can see if we can hear you?
No.
Rosine, can you just try an audible so we can see if we can hear you?
I don't think she can hear us.
Ah, okay. She could call in on the phone number, correct?
Yes.
Says she can see us, she can connect to audio.
Right. Yeah, she should probably call in using her phone.
Yeah, let's.
And there's a number on the agenda.
I don't want to type in the chat because the chat is, becomes a public record. Lita, can you email her and just, if she doesn't have it already, the phone number so she can call in?
Okay, I'll do that.
Perfect. I'm going to run and grab a glass of water while she's, sorry. So Lita, I've got a chat, so she's just called in.
Hello, we see your phone.
Yep, there we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
I'm so sorry, everyone.
No problem. So why don't, hi, I'm Kent Train and it's nice to meet you. Like to give you a couple of minutes here just to introduce yourself and tell us a little about yourself, please.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Hi, everyone, I'm Rosine O'Farrell. My first name is a little tricky. It may be a name you've never seen before. So what I tell people is you break it up in two and it's Row as in row your boat and Sheen as in Martin Sheen. So if you think of Martin Sheen rowing a boat, that's my name. Anyway, I have lived in Simamish for over 20 years. I live here with my husband and my two kids. My career background has been in retail management since I left college, both in Ireland and in the US. I've been home raising my family for the last 16 years. And about six years ago, I became interested in wanting to get more connected with my community. I'd lived here for some time at that stage and really wanted to, you know, get to know my neighbors and get to know the city as it was growing. So I spoke to city council back then, back in 2016, about proclaiming April 2nd World Autism Awareness Day and the city obliged and has done so ever since. And that really kind of sparked something in me to become more interested in kind of civic-minded projects, civic-minded entities. So going from there, then I applied for, and I was appointed to the Planning Commission in 2017 to 2019. I was there for three years. And then I went from there and I'm serving on the board of the YMCA since 2020. And so that's really me.
Great. And is there a reason why you chose not to run for the November election?
Yes. Really, at that point, Kent, I had thought about it for, over different election cycles and really more seriously in the last one. And it just was not the right time for my family personally. And I've been, come to learn from other people that it really is a family affair and you kind of have to be all in and we weren't quite there yet. So that's why I just thought it would be a better thing rather than to take on something and be in the middle of it and realize that there's enough more than I could chew at the time and that my family could chew, so I decided to kind of wait.
And on the council, we, how do you think we could balance development? Or how would you balance development and infrastructure needs of our community?
Yeah, it's a really good question. I think housing is part of infrastructure, first of all. Secondly, I think, having been on the Planning Commission, I was part of that huge discussion around Simamish Homegrown, which is our housing strategy plan. And I think council approved it back at the end of 2019. And we came up with some strategies and the broad strategies about how to tackle housing going forward. So that's a starting point. And we partnered with ART about how to come up with that plan under everyone on the council and Paul Bachmann, who is our chairman. And I think that that's the place to begin, but I also think we haven't really ever gotten any data on what it is that our current residents are really looking for in the type of housing that we need long-term, not just for right now. But if you, for, if you're somebody like me, you plan to stay here as long as I'm alive, as long as I'm alive, what kind of housing am I going to need over time? Am I always going to be in the house that I'm in or am I going to want to downsize, et cetera? And then how are we as the city planning for that? And we really need to get the data on that, what are people looking for over the life cycle of their life? Instead of saying, hey, I'm here in Simamish until my children graduate from high school, then we'll sell the big house and we'll move somewhere else. And I think we need to do better than that.
And what's your vision and timeline for a community hub or town center? Could you include as much detail as you can include housing mix, commercial considerations and transportation options?
Sure, yeah, that's a big question. And I like the town center plan and it is just that, it's the plan. I think it was, it was adopted in 2008. It's been a long time. I, the broad concept of it, I think, is a great idea where we would have a central location that maybe would absorb some of the high-density housing that possibly we need as a city. But again, we're not really sure what we really need and I think we need to get some data around that and ask residents what they're going to need. There are aspects of the plan that I really like, the concept in the plan of the green spine. So it's kind of a park-like scenario that would run from the Simamish Commons through, over through Southeast Fourth and on up between the buildings that would be built along that spine. And it would be various types of parks and greeting and meeting spaces, which I think is the city we're really in need of. Other parts of the plan that I liked that were suggested were we would have a northwest connecting road and a southwest connecting road that would kind of link kind of in a circular fashion, kind of almost providing like another back road, if you like, to kind of connect different hubs of that part of our city. And I think that that's something worth considering. I also feel though, on this whole issue of growth and housing and infrastructure, we've all just been through something and are continuing to go through something that's been really huge. We've all been hit by COVID and the pandemic and we've been hit by it since 2020. And I still don't think we're really fully understand how we have all changed as a result of that. I think we've changed our work habits, we've changed our priorities in our lives. We've changed kind of our social circle, if you like, it's been forced upon us really as opposed to it being a choice. So as a result, that type of thing impacts housing needs. I think it impacts traffic. I think it impacts infrastructure. Because we may not be using all of those elements in the years to come like we used in the years prior, like we used in pre-COVID times, because this is new, we've never experienced this. And then the other thing to talk about transit, that you've mentioned, Kent. We have this huge big light rail system that's about to hit Redmond in 2023 and 2024. And I would hate to think that Simamish would miss out on such an opportunity. I know council are talking about approaching the metro about having specific routes that would run up and down Simamish to the light rail system. I think that's a great idea. I hope you guys run with that and pursue it. Because I, I think when we go back to whatever our new normal is, and we may be experiencing for most of our residents either work in Bellevue or in Seattle, so either Amazon or Microsoft, et cetera. They may decide, they may be allowed to work three days at home and two days in the office and would not, not be a great option for them for those two days or three days in the office where they could leave their car at a hub and take a bus down to the light rail station and get to work that way. So I think we have to think about those kinds of concepts, get some data behind them. How are residents feeling about that, about the future? And how does COVID change their lives and their priorities? Because things that are maybe in the town center plan, in the current town center plan and in our current comprehensive plan, they were written quite some time ago. And our feelings and our priorities and our motivations were one thing pre-pandemic. They may be completely different now and I think that's really worth investigating.
I have a follow-up question for you then. So the council just approved option one, alternative four on transportation. And, and the focus of that, I believe, is a long-term sustainable future for the city of Simamish by taking into consideration the outside hubs or choke points into the city. So let's just use your, you were talking about we should take advantage of the light rail coming in 2023, 2024. So let's call it 2024. And so 202 and Sahali Way and then, you know, and then some were putting a hub to tie into transit that way. So do you think that the council made a good decision to move forward with option one, alternative four by working out the choke points on both the north and south ends of the city? And I'll just ask you this, because there's a couple of reasons why that would take place. Are you aware of the reasons why the council chose that alternative?
Um, I watched the city council meeting and I was kind of not sure why. I do, now correct me if I'm wrong, Kent, because I'm, I could be completely wrong. I think was the planning commission had advised another alternative. There was advice to, to select or staff had advised to select a different option to the one that city council had chosen. So I watched the meeting and I'm unclear on all the details of that. I do know that, for example, heading down Sahali, when we get from Sahali down onto Highway 202 and King County, there's a consideration for a roundabout that would go at the bottom of that road and help with traffic there. I know that's in the works and they're looking for funding for that and I know that may be some time away, but there are kind of more intergovernmental bodies kind of working on these areas. And then at that choke point down at East Lake Simamish Parkway and 202, that Redmond are working on a redesign of that intersection also. I'm sure it's because of the light rail that's about to hit that particular part of their city. So not sure if I'm answering your question correctly, but I think those particular intersections would have a dramatic effect on our traffic. And then as a result, on what we need.
So then, because the other one, the other reason, and that is definitely one of them is, the other reason is for emergency preparedness and emergency safety, which, which is a number one stance that the city should take. You also talked about connectivity for the town center. Are you willing, would, how do I ask this and be nice? I want to be nice.
Oh no, just be straight, Kent.
Okay, thank you. So, so, so a project was done in the town center that, because they built the development with variances so close to the, to the sensitive stream and, and didn't follow the code and got a variance. In that section, the town center connectivity now is moot. It physically can't be done unless we remove the buildings that were built.
Oh, okay.
Not, that's not a good, that wasn't a good plan. It wasn't a good action by the city at, at the time when that was built. Okay, prior to my being on the council. And so we, we have been pushing forward to, hey, follow the code, follow the plans, because we have some pretty good plans, I think you can agree with that, that we have some pretty good plans at the town center, but follow the plan. So my question is, are you willing to, to, to fight for the residents and fight for the plans, even if that would require us to spend legal dollars, spend taxpayers' dollars in a legal manner? You willing to do that?
Well, I don't, well, I think that would depend on the situation. And I would have to, I would, I would have to have all the information before I could give kind of such, like a blanket statement like that. So I think every situation is different. And so it really would just depend on what's going on and what the consequences are for the city, for the residences of our city. I do think that the best way to solve most problems is to kind of talk it out and work it out. And that would be the first place that I would go to before I go to litigation. Litigation may always be, may be necessary and sometimes it is necessary, but it would really just depend on what kind of scenario we were faced with. So I really can't answer that directly to you. I really would like to if I had more information and the time to think it over.
Thank you. All right, Chrissy, is there someone who's gonna ask the next question?
Yep.
Yeah, I, oh, I, I thought she heard me. Yeah, I said council member Moran.
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, good evening.
Hi Karen.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Okay, I had really just a couple of quick questions for you. One of them is, what do you believe are the top three issues that our residents are concerned about?
Well, I thought I knew that. If you'd asked me that pre-COVID, I would have probably answered that pretty quickly. I'm not sure what they are anymore because I think a lot has changed. I, so what I, so to answer your question directly, okay, if that's my direct question, I'll answer it, what I think it is. I think post-COVID or in the middle of COVID, I think people's priority, number one priority is getting reconnected with each other and safely. And how can they do that? I think that we've had the great resignation that's just been going on in our country as a whole and people are changing their lives and changing their work habits and changing how they're living. I think very much people want to get reconnected back with each other. And as a city then, how can we provide those spaces, those safe spaces to do that? So I was thrilled when I saw a city council approved the farmer's market again. Well done, you guys. That was really, that was really a really positive step that you took to kind of collectively, I, I think you collectively relaxed people. And I'm not sure if you know that, but when the farmer's market came back, it was almost like a little piece of, of us kind of came back. And I know that might sound dramatic, but it was like a little bit of our old life had been restored. So I think that that went a long way, went some way to helping people because we're in desperate need of getting reconnected with each other. There's a kind of a collective anxiety that's out there right now that we're maybe not tuned into yet. And so anytime we can get together outside and get together safely is just such a bonus. And anytime the city can facilitate that, I think you really should. So I think that's the number one thing. And let's see, I think things like traffic and growth, which have been the usual issues that people have talked about, has changed so much. I've even noticed like traffic myself, when I'm out, I just do the school run. And really, once that school run traffic is gone in Simamish, it seems to me that the traffic seems to really calm down. And I go out, if I leave my house and I'm going up to Skyline, if I, if I can get out of my development by seven twenty-five, I can just take off up to Skyline and drop my daughter off and I'm not in any traffic whatsoever. So there's kind of a timing issue there. And so I think that the things that were important to people pre-COVID are a little bit different now.
Okay, I think you answered my other question I was gonna ask, so I'm not gonna, not gonna add that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks Karen.
Deputy Mayor Clark.
Hello, Roisin.
Hi Kaylee, how are you?
Great. No, you're good, yeah. So my question is, what have you felt most connected with the city or community? Like in work that you've done, either, you know, on the planning commission? I think you've done some platypheans for peace stuff or like what has really kind of spoken to you and, you know, work you've done?
Well, when I was on planning commission, it's a couple of things. On us in planning commission, we did a lot of things. Gosh, the planning commission is such a great thing for anyone to volunteer if you want to be in part, in tune with what's going on in the city. And that was the single biggest thing that I loved about being on the planning commission was that I felt really connected to Simamish. I knew what was going on, I knew kind of what the issues of the day were, what the commission were trying to accomplish, what the city was trying to accomplish. It was very exciting, it was very interesting. And it gave me a sense of place, a sense of belonging that I didn't have prior to that. I think we're a city of almost sixty-seven thousand people now. And I think anytime you can find that connection and that sense of place in a, in a big city, even though sometimes you don't, can't believe that sixty-seven thousand people live in Simamish, but it's a lot of people. And when you can find those opportunities for connection, I found that at planning commission, it was a very enjoyable experience and everyone I worked with there were amazing. And we did things like Simamish Homegrown, which was the housing strategy. We did development regulations, the urban forest manage, master plan. We, that, one of the last things I dealt with was the small cell technology regulations. And we did the pro plan and all other kinds of things. So that was really rewarding. But on a personal level, I have to say some of the, the, some of the greatest things that I've been involved in, some of the most stressful trying things I've been involved in, the most kind of anguishing and personally growing things that I've been involved in has been with my son who has special needs, he has autism. And when I was especially from elementary school all the way to high school, when you're in the special ed program, you have a thing called an IEP, which is an individual education plan. And every year you sit down with, with the team at the school and you have IEP meetings. And they can be the most stressful and emotional meetings that you've ever been in. And that has been, that has been a huge, that has made a huge impact in my life. And for the better, I would say. And I just learned so much about myself and about what I want for my son and what I want for his future in that experience. And I could go on and on about IEP meetings, but I, but I don't think this is the place. But it was a wonderful experience in, in a lot of ways and gut-wrenching in others. I hope I answered your question, Kaylee. I think I maybe wandered off the point, but please redirect me if I have not answered your question.
No, that's very good, yeah, I appreciate it, thank you.
Let's remember how.
A six-pound Pomeranian is trying to break through the door, so I'll try to get this question out quickly. I'm gonna ask my equity, Roisin, gonna ask my equity question. Have you found a time when you needed to be a champion or an advocate for inclusion, equity and social, or social, social justice?
Yes, and very much what I just said to Kaylee, through all the IEP meetings that I've sat in with and for my son, one thing I would probably say about myself is I'm a pretty lousy advocate for myself, but I'm a pretty fierce advocate for people, particularly my children, but anyone who can't speak on their own behalf. And a child certainly can't do that, not to mention a child with special needs who finds it difficult to express their, their emotions in the moment. So I have had to be his advocate. I often thought that, oh my gosh, I am like, if I were to have picked an advocate for my son, I would not have picked me. And, but you know, you often don't get. I rise to that occasion. I learned so much about myself and how to talk with people who weren't necessarily predisposed to your, my, my, my opinion, my outlook, the kinds of things I was trying to accomplish for my son, because sometimes they weren't exactly inside the box. So collaborating with people and trying to find a way to, to get to the same place, that was a challenge. It was very tearful and emotionally draining at times, but we got there in the end and met a lot of amazing people in the Esqo School District along the way. And so I learned a lot about collaboration and inclusion and what inclusion really meant to me and what meant to my family. So it was an enormous lesson. And like I just said, I could, I could rattle on and on and on on this subject, so I probably shouldn't and I'll, I'll leave it there.
I'll ask you one more question, but it's a different vein. So can you give me your ideas for generating meaningful revenue for the city without raising property taxes?
Meaningful revenue, wow. That's a question I have never contemplated. So I'm not sure I know how to, I know how to answer that. I can only say that to raise meaningful revenue, you also need to go back to your budget. And, and I'm just doing this purely from a housekeeper's point of perspective, that what is your budget telling you? Are you spending enough money in one area and too much money in another area? And where can we cut expenses so that in, in essence, we are raising our revenues without increasing taxes? Sometimes increasing taxes are necessary, sometimes they're not. And, and I know that it's a hot button issue for all of us because we all live in Simamish and we all pay taxes in Simamish. And however, our taxes go to, mostly go to our schools and libraries and I'm all for that because it's almost cyclical. The better the schools in your neighborhood, neighborhood are, it, it appears to be the better your community can be. So we need to protect our schools because that seems to be, in a lot of ways, one of the single biggest reasons people move to Simamish and consider Simamish such a great place to live. So our schools are one of our biggest assets. And if we want to talk about infrastructure, we should also think about our schools, not just as bricks and mortar, but what they give to our city as a whole, what they, what they give to us. It's not, it's kind of that soft, what is the word? That soft capital that they give us, they give us well-rounded citizens, they give us the kids who volunteer in all of our organizations. They teach our kids like such lofty goals and notions, so they are to be really revered and respected. So I would go back to not necessarily raising revenues other, in other places, but maybe going back to our budget and seeing are there places where we could cut expenses so that we don't have to raise taxes? But again, that's kind of talking in the vacuum. I'd have to be looking at specific numbers to see how realistic what I just said is.
Thank you, Roisin.
Sure.
Let's remember Lamb.
You're Roisin. What is the biggest difference? What is the biggest difference between you and the other candidates seeking this appointment?
Hmm, um, probably, well, I'll say what I think. I'm not sure if they really are, are true, but this is what I think. And not knowing, um, I, I, I know Pam, but not knowing, um, the other two candidates. So let me just say what I think. Um, I'm from another country. Um, I came to, I left, um, Ireland over twenty years ago, um, or more. And so that has an effect on a person. Um, so that kind of changes you. Um, so that's probably one thing. Um, uh, I have, um, as I've said already many times in this interview, I have a special needs son, and I think that that has an impact on a person. It changes a perspective that I would never have had on, um, on a person's life, or would never fully understood what that is. Um, when you're, um, the parent of a special needs child, um, being at home with children all day, as I'm sure a lot of you could attest, and when that is your full-time job, it can be quite an isolating occupation and vocation. Um, also being at home full-time as a parent of a special needs kiddo can be even more isolating, um, because your, uh, opportunity for social, for social outlets is quite narrow. Um, you don't get invited to as many places as other people do. Um, so that has had a pre- profound effect on me. And I think it's made me a, a kinder person, a more understanding person, um, slightly less judgmental, although I can be quite judgmental. Um, so I think that, that has had an impact, uh, on my life. Being from another country, having special needs in my family and other issues in my family that I think has helped me be more empathetic towards people. Um, and I, my career has been in retail and retail management. I've learned to work with lots of different kinds of people, uh, meaning people of different age groups and different backgrounds. Um, and I've, I worked all kinds of different hours. I worked weekends. I worked early mornings. I worked Mother's Day when I was a mother. Um, and so you have, I have an, I have an understanding of a different sector of our community in that service sector and what it takes to be successful there and how hard people in that sector work, uh, for not very much money, um, relative to what others make. So I think that maybe that's what's different about me. Um, and then I have a name you've never heard before, so that's also different.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I think I'm the last one here, Rosheen. Um, you spent three years on our, hello? You spent three years on our planning commission, but did not seek reappointment to the planning commission. What led you to not want to continue?
Well, I did think about, um, reapplying. And then I think it was something, I mean, he didn't say directly to me, but it was something somebody said to me, I think it was Larry, um, it was Larry Patterson. He was an interim, um, city manager. And I think, am I remembering his name correctly?
You are.
And, uh, thank you. And he had said one time to me just about public service in general, because he had been in public service all his life or, or for the greater part. And, um, and he may have been reflecting on his own career, but it was something that stuck with me. And he said to me, he said, you know, it's a great thing to be involved in, in this sort of world and to, to be of service to people and to be of service to people. Um, but he said, it's also good to know when it's time to leave and give somebody else a chance, especially when you're involved in a volunteer position, you know? Um, that you might think that the city can't do without you, um, but that's probably not true. So, um, he, that kind of stuck with me, um, to kind of know when it's time to give someone else a go. I had learned a tremendous amount. So I didn't walk away from planning commission feeling like, um, oh, I've done everything I can here and I have nothing left to contribute or that I was, um, bored with it or anything of that kind. I did feel like doing a three-year, four-year term is very good and very beneficial always. But it is time sometimes to move over and let other people have a chance.
Great. So you stated in your application, you are, quote, fiercely interested in all the issues that pertain to running our city, end quote. So with that interest and with your experience on the planning commission, what portion of our recently passed Unified Development Code did you agree or disagree with and why?
Well, I will have to admit that I am not familiar with the unified, um, code like I should be. So I would find that a difficult question to answer. Um, I, if you'll let me kind of avoid the question, as, as it were, and kind of speak to something different. What I do find that's before you guys at the moment is, um, the comprehensive plan or the updating of the comprehensive plan. And that's extremely interesting to me because it's our governing, governing document. And I think that's very exciting work that you're about to embark on, uh, beginning with the vision statement. Um, I do think it's, it's, if I'm remembering my time on the planning commission, I do think the unified code is a good thing. I think that was something that David Pyle had talked to us about, about getting it all in a much more unified fashion, um, if I'm remembering that term properly. So I do think that that's interesting, but I wish I could answer that better for you, Christie, because I don't want to pretend I know what, what it is when I don't. Um, but, uh, on a larger scale, I think what you're about to embark on, on the, uh, the updating of the comprehensive plan is very exciting, very interesting, and I'd love to be part of that.
Great. I think that is all of our questions, Rosheen. So very much appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, and thank you for putting up with my technical difficulties. I apologize, you guys. I thought I had sorted, but obviously not.
It's okay. I think we've all been there at one time or another during this COVID and remote nature. So don't worry about it. We heard you just fine.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. So counsel, it's nine fifty-two and we are on the cusp of needing to extend. And I imagine maybe a break. And then we can either reconvene on this particular topic or we can move to the next one. But I know if I don't run and get another glass of water, I may die. So is counsel amenable to a five-minute break here? Yes. Okay, very good. All right, so we will be back. Uh, what time is it? I can't squinting to see that, just before ten. And we will need to be back here before ten because we need to extend or we can extend right now. In case people are late. I think we're losing folks already. Okay, hard five minutes. Okay, nine fifty-eight, be back on time.
We're just getting it set up.
There we go. Okay, counsel, I had entered a motion to extend.
I motion to extend till eleven.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four-two, motion approved. We will extend till eleven. Okay, counsel, we can either pick up where we left off or move to our next agenda item. Okay, I will move to our next item, but I will say in closing that we do have it to vote on the, um, applicants at our following meeting, which I believe is the thirteenth. That's right. Is that right? Next week, whenever that is. Okay, so our next item is, um, a presentation on the new source control program.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is Deputy City Manager Scott McCall. Lita is pulling up our, um, presenters for this topic. It will be, uh, Public Works team, Jeff Elakish, Audrey Starzy and Lisa Ware.
Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members and Deputy City Manager. Tonight's item will be introduced by Deputy Director, um, Audrey Starzy. So Audrey, I will turn it over to you as you, as you come on board. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, um, Deputy Mayor and council members. As Jeff said, I'm the Deputy Public Works Director. And, um, this evening are Lisa Ware, an engineering technician with, um, our stormwater division of Public Works will be presenting the new source control program to you. This is the first of many meetings. We've backed several times throughout this year. Um, the source control program, as Lisa will explain, is a new NPDs permit requirement. And both Jeff, Lisa and I will be available for questions after the presentation. Lisa, you, you're ready? Go ahead and get started.
Thanks, Lita. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members and Deputy City Manager. Uh, tonight's presentation, as Audrey and Jeff mentioned, is on the introduction of our new source control program that the city is developing. Um, next slide, please. So many of you are aware of the city's NPDs permit, but I wanted to give a brief background of the permit for our new council members. So what is the Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit? Under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, the Western Washington Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit, which you'll hear me refer to as the permit, requires local governments to manage and control stormwater runoff to prevent potential pollution of downstream waters. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has delegated that authority over the NPDs permit to the Washington State Department of Ecology to ensure that the cities within King County, including the city of Sammamish, establish a stormwater program that complies with all of those conditions. Next slide, please. So tonight I'll be discussing the source control requirement. If you look here to your right, you'll see all of the eight raindrops indicating uh, eight of our permit requirements. Specifically, I will be discussing the raindrop circled in blue, the source control requirement. The permit requires that the city implement a source control program for existing development that prevents and reduces pollutants and runoff that discharge to the municipal separate storm sewer system. So a simple way to think of this is preventing stormwater pollution at the source. So source control. So what is a source control program? As stated, it's a preventative inspection-based program focused on addressing pollution and pollution prevention in existing land use activities. So specifically businesses and industrial activity that have the potential to release pollutants to our MS four. So what does that mean for our Sammamish businesses? We want to help educate and provide options on best management practices for specific business activities at their location. We want to prevent pollutants from contaminating stormwater runoff at the source. So again, source control. Next slide, please. So in the last slide, I mentioned our MS four a few times. So what is an MS four exactly? It's simply a conveyance or system of conveyances that is owned by a city or state that discharges to water of the state. It's not combined with sewer and it is not part of a sewage treatment plant. So here's a few photos of our MS four, but it also includes things like our streets, our catch basins, ditches, storm drains. Next slide, please. So we've covered the permit, the new source control permit requirement, and how it will affect the businesses of Sammamish. So how will we implement it? Well, back in June of twenty twenty-one, the city selected Hart Crowser to help us develop the program. And the key goals are to develop a source control ordinance, which is currently under review by city staff, establish a business inventory of sites that could potentially generate pollutants. And the permit identifies these businesses by certain NIX codes that have a greater chance of generating pollution. And you can think of, you know, automotive locations, restaurants, um, grocery stores, things of those natures. And then the last two goals are to prepare outreach and inspection materials in an asset management system and, and inspection training. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we're currently reviewing the source control ordinance. And we're incorporating the best management practices from the Source Control Guidance Manual and formatting it to match our current city ordinances. The ordinance will align with our current goals in the Storm and Surface Water Management Comprehensive Plan and is due to be adopted and implemented by August first of this year, twenty twenty-two, per the permit requirement. So as I stated, we're currently reviewing that and we intend to have that back to you for adoption, uh, this summer, hopefully June, um, maybe July. Next slide, please. So our next goal is establishing a business inventory, which is currently also underway. The inventory will be commercial and industrial sites that could potentially create stormwater pollution. And the inventory of businesses will be incorporated into an asset management software so we can manage the inspections and track all of the information that is related to those businesses. So how many times do we visit the businesses? What type of technical, um, advice do we get? What type of outreach and education did we provide? Was there any infractions? Did we have to use enforcement? Everything that's related to that business will be able to be tracked so we can provide that information to ecology. Next slide, please. So outreach and inspections will be our next step. As part of the permit requirement, we're going to be required to inform the business inventory list about activities at their site that could generate pollutants, as well as inform them of the new program and the upcoming inspections that will be starting for them in January of twenty twenty-three. So during this stage, the consultant will be working on the inspection documents, uh, future outreach material and, uh, training. Here you'll see a great piece of outreach material that I believe I borrowed, um, from Snohomish County. So Phase One permities were required to, uh, implement a source control program in the last permits. This was obviously one that's used at, uh, an auto body shop. So next slide, please. Uh, concurrently with the inventory, we will be working on a records management and uploading the inventory into an inspection management system. The consultant will be providing guidance on the, using the inspection software and, um, enforcement and inspection, as well as education, um, pieces, brochures and different things that we will be using for the businesses. Next slide, please. So here we are, um, in quarter one of twenty twenty-two. In that gray area, we're introducing this program to you and reviewing the draft ordinance. Uh, by late quarter two, we'll be back to you with the ordinance to adopt. As I previously stated, the permit requirement is that this is to be done by August first of twenty twenty-two. And finally, uh, by January first of twenty twenty-three, per the permit requirement, uh, we will have to begin the program and start the inspections. We will be required to inspect twenty percent of our inventory annually. So, um, just a reminder that certain businesses will be based on the type of businesses that they are registered as, uh, on their business licenses, all into the category, um, will be required to be inspected. So if you think of things like, um, and a CPA that's registered in Sammamish or, uh, an attorney that's registered in Sammamish, those businesses will obviously not be visited because they aren't generating pollutants to the stormwater. So next slide, please. That's it. That's a quick overview of our source control program. Um, I went pretty quickly. Might be a little bit nervous, but do you have any questions for me? Yes, Karen.
Let's remember how.
Yeah, just quickly, um, how many emergency spill reports do we actually get? And do you find that residents are engaged in this process or do, do they get it? Do they understand?
Um, I, I got the first part of your question, uh, for how many, I'm sorry, these types.
Spill reports, emergency spill reports. How do we get?
We get, um, typically between fifty and seventy a year. Um, the, most of our spill reports are generated from auto accidents. And, um, Republic, uh, garbage is actually one of our, our higher, um, rated spill reports. Our businesses, really, we don't have a lot of spill reports from. Um, I think it's because we have a really small commercial spine that we don't have a lot of issue with our businesses. We're fortunate in that way. Um, but I would say our, our greatest, um, percentage is definitely from auto accidents.
Okay, thank you. Counsel member Lamb.
So you mentioned that once, um, Mr.
So you mentioned that once this program's established, the city will inspect 20% of the sites. Is that 20%, 100% of the businesses that are going to be the most, the biggest polluters, I guess?
We will be using a prioritization format to do high, medium, and low priority businesses. And so we will hit the high priority businesses in the first year. The Permit is a five-year permit from 2019 to 2024. And then we will get a new permit in 2024 for another five years. And so each year, we will have to visit 20% of our business inventory list. So we completed 100% of the inventory list within the five-year permit time. Does that make sense?
I was just wondering, was that 20% like, so it's five years? Would it take you five years to get to the 100, like the most, the businesses that pollute the most? And that?
That's the minimum. I consider that's the Permit Requirement. So the city always has the choice. Should, we want to review that to conduct inspections more frequently, but 20% per year will be the requirement from the Department of Ecology.
Okay.
And if I may add, part of the implementation will be as Audrey's team brings forth the utility rate study is what level of service do we want to implement? How much new additional resources will we need to accomplish that level of service? So there's a floor that Audrey's talking about, but maybe we want to do more, and we'll need resources to make that happen. So we'll be back to you with those different discussions as time goes on as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any more hands up. So Lisa, Audrey, Jeff, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, Council, our next item is a discussion on the school concurrency code. Mr. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the presentation will be provided by DCD Director David Pyle and Deputy Director Kelly Hildy. They should be showing up shortly.
Good evening, Council. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. With me tonight, as indicated by Deputy City Manager, I have Kelly Hildy. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, so bear with me for a second. Great. So here, the item we have next up is related to school concurrency, where staff will be seeking direction from Council on which option we would like to take going forward regarding school concurrency. What we need from Council is direction as to how to move forward with changes related to the San Amish Unified Development Code as it relates to school concurrency. The Council discussed the school concurrency topic and gave initial direction in November of 2020 and March of 2021 regarding potential amendments to code sections to help align the code that the city has with best practice. We've completed the review, and we have two options for the Council. Option one is repeal the current code sections related to school concurrency in favor of enhanced information sharing with the city's school districts and collaborative code amendments that can help facilitate appropriate school improvements. Enhancement of information sharing is explained in the next slide. Facilitation of appropriate school improvements would include things like expedited permit processing, exceptions and exemptions for certain actions, and prescriptive requirements for facility standards. Of note, I did see that the Lake Washington School Bonds, or excuse me, School Levis that they had on the ballot for today were passing. So that's good news. That will lead to some potential school improvements in the Lake Washington District. And we'd like to be working with the district to see how we can help facilitate further expansion of school facilities when identified as needed by the district. This flowchart here shows how we communicate with the school district during the lifecycle of a development project. So when you see an application for a subdivision come in or a multifamily development come in, those applications can take up to three years for housing units to be developed where they're actually occupied by residents and are generating students to the nearby schools. And this shows you that when an applicant project proposal comes in the door, we do initiate communication early, where an informational notice is sent to the district at the point of pre-application conference. Then after applications are submitted and deemed complete, then there is a questionnaire that's sent out to the school district related to safe routes to school to make sure that we know how students will be getting to school, where bus stops will be located, and do our best to make sure that students that are walking are safe. Then a notice is sent out to the district requesting formal comment on the actual project. It might include CIPA. And ultimately, a notice is sent out to the district regarding approval of the project, notifying them that land use approval has been granted and that the project will be proceeding to construction. Other points of engagement include King County Countywide Planning Policy PF-19A, which is a policy that the county has regarding cities working with the school districts to identify where additional school capacity might be needed and methods to accommodate building school capacity within the urban growth boundary, not citing schools outside of the urban growth boundary in unincorporated areas of King County. We also hold periodic ad hoc informational meetings with district staff when issues come up. We try to communicate as best we can. We hold informational meetings regarding city policy efforts, and the school district keeps us informed about levy efforts and bond efforts they have. And we also have participated in the past in activities such as facilities advisory committees. That's not to say that with all of this that we can't do better. We do strive to give the most information possible to the school district as early in the process of development as possible. And we do want to make sure that we're keeping them informed as we consider things like rezones or other comprehensive plan amendments. We will be working closely with them in the upcoming comprehensive plan periodic update process. And over the years, I have built a relationship with my counterparts at the school districts, and Kelly has built similar relationships. So we like to think that we are trying really hard to improve our relationship with the school districts so that we understand what they are doing and they understand what we are doing. The, under option one, which is repeal of the city's existing current, the current existing school concurrency standards, it would require legislative process, including planning commission, CIPA notification to Department of Commerce, and ultimately concluding with city council presentation and city council public hearing prior to city council making decision to finally repeal. This could be accomplished prior to the city council's August break. And we see this as a fairly streamlined process that is not terribly complex. Under option two, this would continue on the path of code amendments that was previously directed by the Council in November of 2020 and March of 2021, where we would continue to work to modify the existing code language to align it with best practice. And we would continue to work with the school districts to identify what the most efficient way would be for us to collect information regarding school capacities near a proposed development. The risk here is that there is liability associated with this, most likely in the form of a takings claim. There is a legal memo that's provided with tonight's agenda bill, prepared by the previous city attorney, Lisa Marshall. We also have been unable to find other jurisdictions in the state that actually do school concurrency findings, such as what is required currently in our code. In talking to the school districts, their interest is that all of the cities within their district are doing, have the same process. They like things to be consistent across cities. We do feel that even with repeal, there would be opportunity for us to work on mitigation measures to address school capacity through the CIPA process. So we don't necessarily need a strict school concurrency process for us to ensure that with larger projects, there is adequate school space when occupancy takes place. Under this option, under the continued path of amending codes to improve them, we anticipate the legislative review would be complete tentatively in the fall of 2022. It could possibly get pushed into the early part of 2023. Our recommendation is repeal of the existing San Amish Development Code regulations related to school concurrency in favor of enhanced information sharing with the school districts and collaborative code amendments that facilitate appropriate school improvements. One thing to note is that we do already have on the Development Regulations Phase Three Work Plan an effort where we would be taking a look at possibly creating a whole section of code related to schools, where we would work closely with the schools to help provide for some flexibility in citing schools on sites that might be smaller or not typical to what you would consider to be a comprehensive school campus site. We have had conversation about that with the planning commission, and we have noted interest on the part of the school districts to talk about how our rules apply to school sites as they are having a harder and harder time finding sites to locate schools on within the urban growth boundary. So again, what we need from Council is direction regarding how to move forward with these changes. We're going to open it up to questions, and I am going to stop sharing my screen so I can see you all. Thank you.
I don't see any hands up, so I'll give my input. And that would be option one, which is the repeal. Councilmember Howe. Oh, Councilmember Howe, you're on mute.
Thanks. I wonder if we'll have much discussion. I'm wondering if we can't make a motion. Are there others? There's other hands up, so I'll hang up.
Councilmember Moran.
David, I had brought up in the past, one of the big concerns I have is regarding what we can do with working with the school districts on the citing of portables and the such. So on topics like that, how would that fall into one or two?
Yeah, so that would fall under topic number one. It could also fall under topic number two as well. However, if we were to do that under topic number one, we would likely take on two phases. One would be, actually be three phases. One would be repeal of the existing school concurrency rule. The second phase would be working with our current planning staff to identify where some targeted code amendments could be made to, number one, provide some flexibility to the schools and how they could cite things like portables on sites with an expedited process, but also provide some clarity around when associated amenity improvements would be required. I know that one of, having served on the community advisory committee with the, I guess, the facilities advisory committee, excuse me, with the Lake Washington School District, one of the things I heard routinely from parents who were part of that group was that they didn't really like having their students, their children, in portables because there was no plumbing, there was no restroom facility. And they had to leave the building, leave the portable to go into the main building to find a restroom, and that took them out of the classroom for a more extended period of time and offered opportunities for them to wander off and not come back. So, you know, we are very interested in talking to the districts about, you know, when portables are appropriate versus when, you know, a targeted expansion of a building is appropriate and when either of those would trigger additional amenities being brought online. I think the districts are very interested in this as well, based on my understanding and based on some of the information we've found on the district's website related to portables. They don't necessarily always want to add portables. It just seems to be the flexible thing to do. So that would be phase two. Phase three would be, like I talked about a few minutes ago, adding possibly a section to our Unified Development Code about how to, you know, it would be unique to schools. So it'd be almost some zoning controls specific to development of civic uses, including schools. That's something that is already on the draft work plan for phase three. We'll be bringing this back to you later this year when we talk about the budget for '23 and '24. And we'll be asking the Council to prioritize, to see what level of priority Phase Three Development Regs update is and what the tolerance for budget is, given all the other priorities the Council has.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trane.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. David Pyle, you kind of was headed right in, I think you were in my head there for a second because I see the agenda bill here, and it says no budgetary impact. But then you finished off saying there's going to be a budgetary impact because we're going to come back. So help me understand, whether I do option one or option two, you're saying there's no budgetary impact on the bill here, the agenda bill? But the reality is there is going to be some kind of budgetary number that's going to go along with this. Am I correct in understanding?
Yeah, that would be related to Phase Three Development Regs. So that's something we already have on our work plan slated for '23, '24. Ideally, I'd like to get to it in '23, but it really depends on how the Council prioritizes it. We only have enough bandwidth to get through a certain amount of work. So however, that other step, the targeted code amendments, where we would work with the school districts and work with the current planning development review staff to look at how to amend our current rules that we have with specific amendments, that, there is no necessarily budget implication there. We don't need a consultant to help us with that. We can do that in-house. So under option one, the repeal, that we can do in-house. We already have that slated on our work. We already have something related to school concurrency on our work plan for 2022. So we have that budgeted already. It's really the Phase Three Development Regs is where we start to see an impact to the budget, depending on what the Council ultimately directs us to do.
Thank you for that clarification because there is a cost to it. It's just that it's been budgeted for already.
Correct, in terms of staff time, yes.
Right. And option, and you're telling me option one for sure is the one you have. So an option, option two, well, actually, I'm not in favor of option two anyway. So I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I don't have any more hands up. Do you have the feedback that you need from Council?
Yes. As a recap, I'm hearing that we should pursue option one. Identify in phases, phase one of option one would be repeal. Phase two would be work on targeted code amendments with the school district to help facilitate flexibility, but make sure we have the right amenities in place. And then we would be moving into phase three, which would be Phase Three Development Regs, where we would potentially look at creating civic use zoning controls, which would include schools.
All right, David, thank you. Okay, Council, next item, Big Rock Park Central Treehouse Programming Update.
Thank you, Mayor. As they are bringing up the Parks Team, it will be Anjali Meyer, Kevin Teague, Shelby Peralta, and Chris Jordan, and some version of those. So I will turn it over. So I will turn it over. As soon as they jump on the screen, I'll turn it over to Anjali to take it from here.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. Deputy City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of the Parks Recreation and Facilities Department. Your next topic is an update on the programming of the treehouse at Big Rock Park Central. We have completed our first season of opening this facility to the public and are happy to report that it went well. Kevin Teague will give you a short presentation, and as Scott mentioned, Chris Jordan and Shelby are also available to answer any questions you have. And for the new council members who haven't had an opportunity to visit inside the treehouse, we'll make sure to add it to the list when we take you on a tour of Big Rock South. With that, I will turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Anjali. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We really appreciate the opportunity to bring you this tonight. With me, as Anjali mentioned, is Shelby Peralta and Chris Jordan. Shelby is our Park Project Manager, and she managed the construction at Big Rock Park Central, which included the treehouse. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Shelby.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and Deputy City Manager. Tonight, I'll be providing an update on the treehouse programming at Big Rock Park Central. As part of my presentation, I'll give a brief background on the treehouse construction and programming, walk through the maintenance of the treehouse, provide a recap of programming in 2021, and discuss staff's recommendations for programming in 2022, and then conclude with next steps. So tonight, we are seeking input on staff's recommendations for treehouse programming in 2022. Starting off with background information, this may serve as a bit of a refresher, but to help orient everyone, Big Rock Park North is located along Southeast Eight Street and was transferred to the city in 2011. Big Rock Park Central was transferred in 2017, and this park opened this past summer following completion of Phase One improvements and is a site where the treehouse is located. And then lastly, is Big Rock Park South, which was transferred this past November and is located along Southeast Twentieth Street. Now, the treehouse design and engineering was a collaborative effort with four consultants, Terrapin Architecture, Treehouse Art, Greenwood Engineers, and the Stratum Group. It was built into four landmark Western red cedars and was constructed in two phases. The first phase was completed in 2013, and the second phase was completed in 2014. The treehouse was built using primarily recycled and repurposed materials, and the structure totaled approximately 1,440 square feet. As part of the Phase One Improvement Project, a gate was installed at the top of the stairs in an effort to control access to the treehouse, as you can see in the photo to the right. So to prepare for the opening of Big Rock Park Central, staff introduced programming options for the treehouse to the Parks Commission and to City Council in the summer and winter of 2020. Options ranged from being completely open during park hours to only being open two or three times per year. Staff presented the pros and cons of each option, as well as budgetary impacts for each option. Of the four that were discussed, Option Two was preferred by both the Commission and the City Council, and this opened the treehouse four times per month seasonally, in addition to allowing schools to use the treehouse outside of the allotted timeframe by obtaining a special use permit. Next, moving on to treehouse maintenance, the first maintenance item is arborist assessments, and this has been completed by Tree Solutions over the past few years. These assessments began during the early stages of design of Phase One Improvement. Following their initial visit in 2019, they recommended that an annual assessment of the trees be completed to monitor any changes in condition as the trees were showing signs of distress after the treehouse was constructed. So as recommended, Tree Solutions returned in the spring of 2020 to reassess the trees. During their site visit, it was noted that the overall condition of the trees had improved from the irrigation and mulch recommendation in 2019, and that trees were putting on new foliage. And at that time, the trees were still structurally sound. And then they returned this past fall to complete an assessment following completion of park construction. It was noted that the trees are still in good condition after construction, that they are still structurally sufficient to support the treehouse, and they recommended the next assessment be scheduled during the tree's next growing season in spring of 2023. So in addition to arborist assessments, there is ongoing maintenance required, such as periodic tree pruning, deck staining, vandalism repairs, and any required maintenance on the structure's security cameras. And very exciting, the maintenance team is happy to report that there have been no issues of vandalism to the treehouse since the park opened this past June. And then now that you have a better understanding of maintenance, I'll give a quick recap on 2021 programming and staff recommendations for 2022. So as I mentioned earlier, the programming options selected for the treehouse opened the treehouse two weekdays and two weekends per month from March through October. This programming went into effect shortly after the park's grand opening in June of 2021. In order to visit the treehouse, visitors were required to register for a time slot on the city's website. Now, each time slot allowed up to 15 visitors, and they could spend up to 20 minutes in the treehouse. During this time, a facility monitor was on-site to oversee registration and to minimize misuse of the treehouse. And there was such a high demand for visiting the treehouse that more open houses were added in August and September. And we are very excited to share that in total, the city hosted 25 open houses and welcomed over 2,000 visitors just since June of 2021. There was great success in the treehouse programming over the last year. Moving forward, staff would like to continue with the seasonal opening and online registration model for open houses, but we would like to add approximately eight more open houses during the busier months of August and September in order to respond to the increased demand. Additionally, staff would like to increase the number of visitors for each time slot from 15 to 25 people. Outside of open houses, staff are interested in pursuing programmed activities, both in and around the treehouse, that would serve all ages, from youth to senior groups. And then lastly, staff would like to install overhead lighting in the meeting room. Even in the spring and in the fall, the meeting room does not receive as much sunlight, and lighting would help to accommodate visitors during open houses and may also serve programmed activities. Now, these recommendations were presented at the January 12th Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting. During this meeting, the commission did not express any concerns with staff's recommendations and were in agreement with the increase in open houses, number of visitors, expanded programming, and meeting room lighting. So next step, staff would like to implement these programming modifications for 2022 and install overhead lighting in the treehouse meeting room. Staff will continue to assess the health of the trees and the structure and adjust programming for the treehouse as needed in future years. And so now that I've quickly walked you through the background, maintenance, and programming, I'd like to open up for discussion, and thank you for your time. I have these fun photos that a neighbor sent me after we had our little snow apocalypse last month.
Great. Thank you, Shelby. Council, any questions that you'd like to ask?
Counsel, I'm going to apologize really quick. I am having issues with connectivity, and it keeps kicking me off. So if I get the message across my screen again, I may have to click my camera off. So, Councilmember.
Is there any opportunity to turn this into a revenue source for us? I know it's not ADA compliant. That's correct, right? And the ADA stuff is really expensive, if I remember correctly. But being able to potentially have people host parties there and us getting some revenue from it, is there any way we could think about that?
That's a really good question, and staff has looked into that. We have contacted the legal consultant with the MRSC, and they indicated that the city shouldn't look to generate revenue from a facility for which we haven't made a concerted effort to make accessible. So that's the word that we've heard from our legal counsel on that particular regard.
Deputy Mayor Clark.
Yeah, I just had a question on the online registration. If there was any issues that you guys run into, you know, with accessibility for internet or anything else like that, if there's opportunity for walk-up days?
It's a great question. Chris, do you want to answer that question?
Do you want to answer that question?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So yeah, we used drop form, so it did work pretty good for us in August through November. We did have people call in, because it did get filled up pretty quickly. So we did allow some people to walk in, knowing that people couldn't make it or let us know. But we could think about some walk updates more. The reason we wanted people to register, even if they can call in, is because the parking is limited. So we kind of want a buffer of 20 minutes in and then 10 minutes for a buffer. So it just allows more for parking and people have access and stuff like that.
Great. Thank you. I didn't even think about parking. So, yeah. Great. Thank you. I didn't even think about parking. So, yeah.
I don't see any more hands up, but I'll make the quick comment that I did during the agenda meeting as well, which is the timeliness of this. As I was walking in the park with my daughter, and we walked past the treehouse, and she was grumbling about how she's never been in it, and I told her she could blame me, that I was sorry that we had done the way we did, that we were trying to do the best we could for the trees that were there in preserving them. So it's great news to read that the trees are faring well and that we are continuing to look after them. It would be nice to open up some additional service. I know it is just an amazing resource that we were gifted with the park, and it would be nice to allow a few extra people in there. And I know that we will continue to be mindful of the health of the trees, so for the longevity of the treehouse.
I just had a quick question, just for the accessibility portion. Maybe even something like a virtual walkthrough, even if it's online, you know, could be something to alleviate, you know, that it's not fully accessible.
That's a great idea, and that seems like it'd be fairly easy to pull off. We will definitely look into that.
Thank you.
So I don't see any more hands up. So Anjali, Kevin, Shelby, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, council, we have about 16 minutes left before we need to extend again. So hopefully, we can get through everything. Next, we have public comment. So pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@hachey@smamish.us and thecitycouncil@smamish.us. If you are on the Zoom meeting and you'd like to give verbal public comment, information on how to join us on the meeting accessibility at the top of our agenda. Three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. During public comment, the city clerk will ask attendees to press the raise hand button if they wish to give comment. If joining the meeting by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand to alert the clerk. When it's your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you, and you will be given the ability to turn on your webcam. If you're meaning to wrap up your comments, after which you will be muted at the end of the three-minute period. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone waiting to give public comment this evening?
I see one person that has raised their hand. Is there anybody else that would like to give public comment? Please raise your hand now. I will transfer that caller right now. Paul Stickney.
Hello, City Council. Real good job with the interviews tonight. Comment along those lines. I assert that the direction outlined in my public comment tonight far and away serves the best interest of the residents of Sammamish, the city, and development interests appropriately. The question to me isn't which direction to take. I'd like to suggest one. The question is, as to what degree are the directional components implemented? So, a repeat of pivotal net positive words. Obtain lacking information. Reduce traffic congestion. Alleviate housing misdevelopment. Enable holistic enrichments. And come up with two inspiring visions for the city, one for 95% of the city and one for 5%. Let's talk about and read into the record seven abridged parts that enrich and sustain suggests for the direction of the city. One, reduce additional supplies of housing types the city has internal surpluses of. Two, quickly add housing supply types the city has internal past and present shortages of. Three, sustainably plan for optimally balanced internal housing supplies for recurring generations. Four, sustainably size desirable and convenient economic services based on Parts One, Two, and Three. Five, determine citywide transportation and transit systems based on Parts One, Two, Three, and Four. Six, effectively manage and leverage the wealth and benefits created by Parts One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. And then seven, only as needed if needed, add major lane capacity road projects in the future. The third part is also from enrich and sustain, and it talks about 7777, what I call satisfying jackpots. The first seven, holistic benefits for seven generations and multiple cultures in Sammamish now and over time. Second seven, seven fundamental parts of enrich and sustain, which I just read into the record. The third seven, to get support by seven City Council members and a clear
15 seconds.
of residents. And the last seven, enlightened legislative decisions on how the seven fundamental parts are enacted, and that's the degree. Enjoyed the meeting tonight, and thanks for holding the council interviews.
Thank you. Lita, just to confirm, is there anyone else that popped on that wanted to give comment?
I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Great. So that will conclude our public comment. Next is council reports. I do have a written report there. One additional item is that I did have a meeting. Sounds like Councilmember Howe also had one today with King County Council Member Sarah Perry. It was fairly general in nature. She just kind of wanted to understand what our priorities were. I kind of stuck to our legislative priorities when communicating to her, but I did have a strong emphasis relative to stormwater and spoke specifically to the need in Sammamish on retrofitting some of our stormwater in those open water ditches so that we can have retention, detention, and spoke about our and spoke about our Inglewood, or excuse me, not Inglewood, Louis Thompson tightline that we're working on as well. She does plan to do monthly meetings with myself, and then I think she's also planning to do that as well. She had a meeting with the deputy city manager and our city manager yesterday as well, too. So just I will keep you apprised of anything that comes from that I did forward on from her office, the grant information, and specifically forwarded some to the Arts Commission because they may be looking for some grant opportunities as well. Is there anyone else that has a council report?
I had a council report. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the Public Issues Committee meeting, and there are four vacant seats, which the PIC nominating committee has recommended. And I forwarded everyone on council, the agenda, and it lists the four council members, and I just need approval that everyone is okay with the four people that are nominated.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? By a vote of six-zero, we have our approval to vote for those numbers. Thank you. And that includes our own councilmember Howe, in fact.
Mayor Mauchow, Karen Howe and I will be going to the E T P meeting on Friday, and we will be voting for the chair and vice chair. And that's the actual only action items that we will have to make a decision on. So we're looking for the blessing of the council to vote for the chair and vice chair positions.
Go forward.
Thanks, Karen.
Yeah, I'm not even, yeah, I don't even know if this one requires a motion, and our city attorney can weigh in, but our council rules do afford for some minor decisions, like who you're voting for for chair and vice chair on a committee to be done without council approval. But if I'm misspoken, I'm sure our city attorney will weigh in.
I defer to you, Mayor Mauchow. It seems like there's consensus among the group, so.
I think it's fine. The committee, yeah, it's the committee you guys are going to be serving on. So I think it is within your purview to elect whoever you want to as your chair and vice chair of the committee you're serving on.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Council and Mayor.
Anyone else with a council report this evening? Okay, seeing none. Mister Deputy City Manager, do you have anything to report out on?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to note two, two things. One is the discussion we had at the mayor-deputy mayor meeting about the bill that is up at the legislature that you had interest in. The other piece is, we did have one item that got delayed from the executive session that I have a request from Mr. Pyle if we could to get back to that so that they can get some direction on that. So if it's amenable to the group to extend for a few minutes to to wrap that up, I think staff would appreciate getting the direction of council for that.
I move that we extend the council meeting to eleven twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend to eleven twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Nope, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of five-one, we will extend to eleven twenty-five. So hopefully, we'll be out of executive session maybe a minute or two early. And do we expect any action with, pardon? Mister Deputy City Manager, do we expect any action with this executive session or no?
Not action post-executive session, no. This is, staff is looking for just for direction there.
No action is anticipated.
So how long do you think executive session is going to be?
Hopefully, till eleven twenty-three. Well, if we extended to eleven twenty-five, we might as well.
Well, I'm hoping we could adjourn early, so.
We might. I don't know how long executive session is anticipated. Mister Deputy City Manager, do you have any idea how much time they have? Or need?
Thank you, Mayor. I I'm going to take a stab and saying that maybe twenty minutes should be enough. And that if if that leaves us a little bit of time, if we do need to extend out to the full eleven twenty-five, we could do so.
Okay, so let's say eleven fifteen that we'll be back, and if not, we will extend.
Thank you, Council.
Motion to adjourn.
But I just want to confirm, I need to confirm with, hold on. I need to confirm with City Hall that they're back up and running.
Yes, we're back. I mean, he's running.
All right. Now, I'll launch an admission.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six-zero, we are adjourned. Thank you, staff and council.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Aye.